This program is recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television. This is a rebroadcast of the Eau Claire School Board Meeting. The audio for this program can be heard on WRFP LP 101.9 FM.
Let's call to order tonight's Board of Education meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have we complied with the open meetings law notification this evening? All right, thank you. Could you please do a roll call to verify quorum?
Present.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle. Here. Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Luganbill.
Here.
Commissioner Spindler.
Here.
Commissioner Bouk.
Here.
Commissioner Jean.
Here.
Great, thank you. So, next on our agenda is the public forum. This is a 30-minute time period for the public to speak to the board. We do try to have the citizen limit their talking time to four minutes if you could. And let's see who we've got here. I've got about six folks up tonight. First, Ann Meyer, you want to come up and just say your name and address, and then go ahead. Press a button over there. Yes, there you go.
All right, good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Ann Meyer, and I reside at 4227 Heartland Drive West, Eau Claire. And I work at South Middle School. I'm part of the classified support staff, school year support staff. And I am also on the committee for the compensation. And I want to thank the school board for putting that together and realizing that it's time to take a look at the compensation for all the groups. Appreciate that. Tonight, you're going to, as part of that, you're going to be getting some recommendations for the different groups. And as part of my group, the hourly group, the classified staff, we still have some concerns, and I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with that. We don't really feel that we've come to an agreement with what is being, with what is being proposed because we never really got a chance to see all the numbers and what the impact was really going to be. I know there was some confusion about language of bringing us up to 75 percent of the whole, and just some confusion about what that really means exactly. Also, there was concern about, you know, what would the cost be to bring us to whole with the market value of the jobs and versus maybe 80 percent. Another concern we have is what the increment of increase across the board would be. Looking at the minutes from some of the other groups, certified and the admin group, they were going to be getting 2 percent increases, and we were, suggested to us by the facilitator, 1.75 percent. And that, I guess, has been changed to 1.77. Not sure when that occurred. Even though I'm on the committee, all of a sudden it went from 1.75 to 1.77. So, just a little confusion on that. Also, as part of the compensation committee, we were hoping to address the part about where the school age or the school year employees had their vacation time taken away and not compensated for that. And to date, we've really not had any meaningful conversation about that, and we kind of feel that that should be something that's discussed. There's been some conversations that perhaps we could be paid for more holidays. Currently, we are paid for three holidays, and school year support staff are paid for 12. So, a suggestion was made, perhaps we could be paid for Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, as the 12-month support staff are paid. That would not involve getting a sub. I know the concern is that when support staff is out of the building, a sub is needed, and the continuity with the students, it's just not the same as not having us there. So, that would be part of the solution. Also, we really would like to have more personal days off. One personal day for nine or 10 months is not enough time to attend your own personal life. If you would like to take a day off to attend an event with your own family, just something like that. So, we're just hoping for at least three or four more personal days to use at our discretion. And lastly, there's concern about people that don't take the district health insurance, that there isn't any kind of compensation for that when it does save the district a great deal of money. You know, some of the support staff, they might not qualify for the district insurance or they don't take it. So, there was maybe some hope that maybe some kind of compensation could be made for something like that. And especially, a member made a comment about, you know, spouses that are employed by the school district, they seem to get a pretty sweet deal on their health insurance. So, we're just kind of wondering about that. And lastly, we're just wondering if we couldn't have those meetings more frequently, and if we could have materials given to us before the meeting so that the members on those committees could really digest what is going to be addressed at the meetings, so that we can have some meaningful conversations when we meet. So, thank you for your time. I hope I didn't go over the four minutes, but these are some very important issues and concerns that we want the board to be made aware of. So, thank you for your time this evening, and happy holidays.
All right, thank you, Ann. Okay, next is Susan. And are you part of Mann's group? No, okay, go ahead, just state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Susan Nicolai. I live at 1324 Eddie Lane. I also work in the district as a classified staff member, as Ann, as I am also on the compensation committee. I guess I don't have a whole lot to add, as Ann so beautifully covered just about everything on there. I just want to reinforce that what you are going to hear tonight is version 1.0, which is what we've been told for months, that it is just an example, nothing is set in stone, it can change at any, at any time. Unfortunately, we haven't had the opportunity to make any changes. We haven't been given the, you know, paperwork and the numbers that we've asked for or requested. So, basically, all I can say is that our committee is not, not able to recommend any dollar amount to the board at this time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all right. Next, we have Brian Hoskin, and I guess a few are coming up together. Go ahead, Brian.
Might have to move this lower, I'm a little short here, so, there you go. I'm Brian Wilchin, I live at 4505 Kensington Court. I'm a teacher in Eau Claire School District, a parent of two students in the public school system here, and a taxpayer. I'm going to be introducing three outstanding educators from Mann's Elementary School. They are Tracy Tomaniac, Kylie Weingarten, and Chris Chapman. They're going to share the great things that they're doing at Mann's, and then I will follow up with some closing comments. First, I'd like to introduce Tracy Tomaniac.
All right, come up, Tracy.
Hi, good evening, thank you. My name is Tracy Tomaniac, and I am currently a fifth-grade teacher at Mann's Elementary School. I am in my 16th year of teaching. I have taught nine years at the fifth-grade level, and I've taught seven years at the middle-school level. Upper elementary-age children are beginning the transition of being interested not only in themselves, but the world around them. With that said, it was important to the fifth-grade teachers at Mann's, who happened to be Brian and I, to incorporate a field trip for the students that allowed them to see firsthand how their actions have a direct benefit to the people in our area. On Friday, December 18th, the Mann's fifth-grade students, in partnership with UWEC and Blue Gold Beginnings, traveled to the Eau Claire Sport Warehouse. While there, the students participated in various service projects that benefited the Chippewa Valley. Some of those projects included chew toys for the Humane Association, winter cards for the veterans, tie blankets, socks of love, hunger awareness posters for Feed My People Food Bank, coloring pages for the hospital, and Bolton Refuge care packages. Back at school, the students reflected on their day and shared their positive thoughts with their teachers. Students said they felt good about the service that they had provided for others. Several students said they wished that they could do service projects one day a month. One student said, "Thank you, it was the best day of my life." This experience has proven that when students feel connected to their school and their community, positive outcomes really do take place. I am proud to be an educator in the Eau Claire Area School District and consider myself fortunate to work with the students and the families each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Kylie Weingarten, 1554 Hazelteen Drive in Eau Claire. I'm a special education teacher at Mann's, and I serve students kindergarten through fifth grade who have been identified with a learning or behavior disability and require additional supports and services. My role as an educator is to make sure that they get explicit instruction and support for any need that they have. During my past 10 years as a special educator, I've had the opportunity to work with students for consecutive years during the elementary experience. And as a result, I've seen their individual growth toward their learning goals over time, and this has allowed me the opportunity to build such strong and close relationships with them and also their families. I believe these relationships have a very important impact on the students' education and help them grow, and this is one of the many reasons I enjoy going to work every day. I also work very closely with a dedicated and supportive staff who are truly invested in the students. They understand that education goes beyond just teaching the academics, it's supporting the whole child and helping them reach their full potential, no matter their abilities or maybe the barriers that they face each day. I'm very grateful to have the opportunity to work with my colleagues, students, and families each and every day. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Chapman, 2035 Sierra Drive in Eau Claire. I'm the physical education teacher at Mann's Elementary School, and I'm here to talk about the music, art, and fayed schedule. When the school district made a change to the music, art, and fayed schedule a few years ago, it meant all students would receive 45 minutes of instruction daily in one of these three areas. It is referred to as the ABC Mape Schedule. Each building has been able to develop their own Mape Schedule to best meet the needs of their students. At Mann's, our schedule has 15 minutes in between each grade level, which allows the Mape Teachers time to take care of any student issues before preparing equipment and supplies for the next grade level. As a building, we have also developed a modified Mape Schedule that allows us to plan all school meetings and assemblies, and the students do not miss instructional time for entire class periods. Compared to previous years, this schedule has provided more contact time with kindergarten students. It has provided classroom teachers for each individual grade level the opportunity to have common collaboration prep time during each school day, and students with a consistent daily schedule. It has also allowed our building Mape Teachers to become a more unified group because all three teachers are in the building at the same time. This ABC rotating schedule has eliminated any travel time to different schools for the Mann's Mape Teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Brian, go ahead.
I'm just going to follow up with a couple of comments. It wasn't that long ago that a now-retired school board member said that she and the board wanted the Eau Claire School District to be a destination district. I remember being at that board meeting and feeling a sense of pride working for the Eau Claire School District. And as you can see by the three educators that presented before me, or after me, there are some great things going on at Mann's Elementary, and they are great examples of exemplary educators. They have made Eau Claire a destination district. But you need to hear the other side of their stories. Tracy Tomaniac did come to us from Black River Falls last year. She had taught there for 14 years. Tracy wanted to be closer to her home and to her family. Both of her boys currently attend Sherman Elementary. When Tracy joined the Mann's staff, she immediately added all those years of experience to become an excellent addition to the Mann's family. When Tracy came to Eau Claire, she knew that her pay would be lower, but did not foresee being frozen or even paid what she was paid eight years ago in Black River Falls. This year, Tracy has 27 students with a wide variety of needs and challenges. One of our district priorities, as listed in the strategic plan, is to promote students' social and emotional growth. But it makes it difficult to do this when the class sizes are this high at the elementary level. Our students truly benefit when we can make connections with them on a daily basis. It makes it more difficult with these large class sizes. Tracy and her husband have had some difficult conversations about if they made the right choice for their family teaching in Eau Claire. We need to keep class sizes low and retain the experienced teachers that have joined ECASD. Then there's Kylie Weingarten. She has been working extremely hard to keep up with all the changes to her programming at Mann's Elementary School in the special education department this year and in years past. There have been over 10 changes to her daily schedule just since September. At one point during a normal school day, she is teaching a third-grade math group, a second-grade math group, and a kindergarten reading group, all at the same time. How is class load like this best for students? Currently, there are many open positions in the special education department here in Eau Claire. How can we attract and retain special education teachers and support staff so we can meet all of these students' needs? Finally, there's Chris Chapman. She shared some wonderful things that the music, art, and fayed departments are doing in the district. The arts truly are important to our students. With the move to the ABC schedule a few years back, it really changed the landscape of how they taught their students. While kindergarten students gained time, students in first through fifth grade lost contact time from three days a week to only two days a week in music and fayed. If a student has one of those classes on a Wednesday, Thursday, or a Friday, they will not see that teacher again for another five days before they will be instructed again by them. The connections with students has decreased on a weekly basis for music and fayed. Now, the Eau Claire School District can be a destination district again. Let's move forward with the referendum that will show Eau Claire that they value public education, the students, the staff, and the administration that make it happen every day. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brian. Go Mann's Mustangs. Okay, next on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to review the upcoming Board of Education events. Well, starting on December 23rd through January 1st, all schools will be closed for winter break, and the administration building will be closed December 24th and 25th, and December 31st and January 1. On January 4th, at 10:30 a.m. in the administration building, there will be a meeting of the Policy and Governance Committee. Also, on that date, at 7:00 p.m., there will be a school board meeting. So, tonight, we want to do some individual recognitions, and we want to recognize Adam Bowle. Adam, would you stand? Adam has just recently been certified as a National Board Certified Teacher. He has been with our district, teaching band at South Middle School and DeLong Middle School since August 27th, 2014. He's brought many great experiences with him as he came to us from Mondovi School District, where he taught from 2007 to 2014. The North Star Summer Band Program was Adam's summer home from 2004 to 2006, as he worked on his Bachelor of Music Education at the University of Wisconsin, Eau Claire. Adam continued his education and received his Master of Science in Education from the University of Wisconsin Stought, and he graduated magna cum laude in 2012. As the orchestra conductor for the Eau Claire Children's Theater and Chippewa Valley Theater Guild, Adam conducted nearly 300 performances of more than 60 productions from 2004 to the present. And he just finished composing the music and lyrics for his third musical, which will premiere at the Mabel Tinder Theater in Menominee next summer. Since 2003, Adam has continued his involvement with several community performing arts groups. Adam, we congratulate you on your achievement as a National Board Certified Teacher, and we know that you will continue to be an excellent teacher for the students of the Eau Claire Area School District. Thank you. I'd also like to recognize Adam Keaton and Laurie House, neither of whom I think could be here tonight, but they were representatives from the Eau Claire Area School District to the 2015 Wisconsin Forward Exam Review that was held December 8th and 9th in Wisconsin Dells. And this is a very important distinction for our school district to have this kind of input into what will be the state accountability exams in the spring. So, congratulations to them for being recognized for their expertise, but more importantly, thank them for giving up two days of their time to give input to this exam. So, now we come to some very exciting news for the school district. I received notification that the Eau Claire Area School District has been named to the Sixth Annual Advanced Placement Honor Roll. We are receiving this recognition for the second time in three years. It is a very unique honor in and of itself to be recognized twice in three years. The district was on the Fourth Annual Honor Roll two years ago. There's our little poster to commemorate that distinction. The AP Honor Roll consists of 425 school districts out of approximately 15,000 school districts in the U.S. and Canada that simultaneously achieved increases in access to advanced placement courses for a broader number of students, and also maintained or improved the rate at which AP students earn scores of three or higher on the AP exam, which is considered a passing score. The exams are scored on a scale of one to five, with the minimum passing score of three. It's important to note that each high school's poverty rate, as well as their results in closing the achievement gap, are also reflected and considered in this distinction. There were 31 Wisconsin schools honored this year, and according to the U.S. Census, there are over 14,000 school districts in the United States. And when you kind of multiply that by the number of high schools in each district, you get a sense of what this distinction means to us. So, just to give you a few statistics, in 2014-15, the district saw the following increases compared to two years prior, which is why we are now on the AP Honor Roll. We saw a 27.3 percent increase in the number of passed exams with scores three, four, or five. We saw a 30.4 percent increase in the number of exams that were taken, and we saw a 29 percent increase in the number of students who completed the course. Both high schools, North and Memorial, targeted improvement in their advanced placement program as part of their school improvement plans in the last three years. And these results are reflection of a school-wide and secondary school efforts to promote rigor, to improve outcomes in literacy and math, and to provide access and support for post-secondary success in all of our students. These kind of results do not come about just from the AP teachers' work. It is a school-wide effort with the support that teachers and principals and other administrators and support staff give to the students. And I want to congratulate both North and Memorial on this fine distinction. And finally, we have a little New Year's present for you. Mann's talked about their work in helping the community, and what we see this is kind of across the school district. There's an effort on the part of students and schools to give back to the community. So, Terry Piper Thompson put together a montage that will reflect these efforts, and it's on the, to describe, yes. And I think it's called a New Year... Yeah, yeah. Let's see any difference.
Great, it was wonderful, thank you, appreciate that. For the president's report, I only have one item for the board members. Just for those of you who are going, the Wasbe State Convention is January 20th through 22nd in Milwaukee. Now, at the next meeting, we'll discuss the Wasbe resolutions, that always go before the state convention. So, our delegate to the convention is Chris, with Catherine as the alternate, so we'll give them direction. Well, we'll discuss it next time, a resolution time after that, on the Wasbe resolutions. And just so you know, board members, they are posted, those resolutions, on the Wasbe website, so you might want to take a look at them before the next meeting.
I have a copy of them, too.
A paper copy?
Yep.
Okay, so either way, thank you. Looks like we, student reps aren't here tonight. I guess there's a band concert, correct? Yeah, mm-hmm, okay. Board committee reports, let's see, P and G, I know, go ahead and do that. Commissioner Dux?
Yes, we had a meeting this morning.
We had a meeting this morning, a long one, and Chris Hambuch-Boil and I were there. Joe Luganbill couldn't get there because of his car. And Tim Liebham and Mary Ann Hardbeck were there. We spent quite a bit of time talking about Policy 225 and 221, which are superintendent evaluation, and 221 is recruitment slash appointment of superintendent. So we have a little bit of legal issue with dates, and so we voted to send that to Steve Weld for consultation and review of those. So we're hoping at the next board meeting, we'll be able to present those. We also discussed board vacancies, Policy 133. We reviewed Altoona's sample policy, and we'll study policies from Wasby for the January 4th meeting. We might have a report for that. Other policies we studied were 230, the administrative team, 447.11, special education, seclusion and restraint. And next meeting, we will also look at Policy 665 concerning fraud prevention and reporting. Also, 342.7, services and programs for ELL students. So we'll be doing well if we can get through all of that.
As usual, working a lot. Thank you. I guess, Commissioner Zhang, you have a PAC report? Is it correct?
Yes. We had PAC and budget as well. I'll start with the budget. We met on the 14th at 11:00, right here. Administration had given us some answers to some of our questions. We discussed sample referendum questions. And for PAC, we met the same night on the 14th, but at 7:00 p.m. We went over the five-year capital improvement plan. There was a lot of questions, very good questions. We also went over the five-year capital plan, somehow got into the referendum question, which was the third thing that we were supposed to be discussing anyhow, but we tied it all up, and it was a very, very good night.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Have I missed any committees? Democrat, trans, go ahead.
If you have missed anything, Joe, we didn't talk about who was going to do it ahead of time.
Yeah. Okay. Whoever can do it.
We met on December 10th, and we had updates on our building capacity from both Tim Liebham and Larry. Tim looking at more how the class size, capacity numbers, and comparing to our current enrollment, and then Larry looking at the facility constraints. And so our capacity at the different schools is measured in kind of two different ways. We looked at both of the ways that it's measured, and then comparing with our enrollment. Over the past ten years, we've had mostly growth, fairly modest growth, after ten years of decline in enrollment. And we continue to kind of watch the elementary schools. There are probably four schools that are really at or over capacity, or very near capacity, and four that maybe have some space. And we continue to have conversations about what to do about that in the future, if we can balance enrollments in some way without, you know, adding on to the schools that are at capacity. We also got an update from Prairie Ridge. We have the very, I guess, good problem of the numbers there have far exceeded the projections, unlike the rest of the district, and they are using all of the classrooms that they have currently. One of the ways that we are fiscally responsible is by combining bus routes, so that a portion of the city goes to AM and a portion of the city goes to PM, so we can use those classrooms, obviously, twice a day for the half-day programs. But when families move within the district and we're already at capacity, it makes it very difficult to switch a child into a different class or arrange transportation. So they're buddying up against their space constraints and talking about if they need another classroom, what that would look like within their building. And if that growth continues, we may need more space there. And then, looking ahead, I guess to the next meeting, we are going to be brainstorming all of the options for balancing elementary enrollment, kind of the pros and cons of those, so that we can, we have something more firm to bring to the board. And I will be requesting an agenda item at the end of our meeting related to what we're going to do about the high school disparity between the two high schools. There's quite a difference in enrollment that you heard about at the end of this year last year. So, very productive meeting.
Great. All right. Sounds good. Okay. Thank you. Legislative update. Go ahead, Commissioner Hambuch-Boil.
Good evening, everyone. As Rich said, on January 20th, as part of the state convention, we will be pulling all the delegates from all the school boards together. And what that means is, as I take and bring the legislative information from Wasby, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, four hundred-plus districts belong, and four hundred-plus people come as delegates to hash out these resolutions and have deep conversations, and they're all voted on. So that's important for people to know that it is, it's nonpartisan. It's, we have lots of different opinions in that room, and we arrive at good solutions. So I wanted you to be aware of that. Here is the, there are quite a few of them, just so you know. As far as legislation goes, December 17th, the Assembly Education Committee held a day-long hearing down in Madison at the state capitol, and it was attended well by school board members, but you can know that it's probably, most of the members that they listed that attended were from the southern part of the state. I wish they'd hold them in other parts of the state. But at our last board meeting, we did pass a resolution against the bill that they talked about the most, Assembly Bill 481, which restricted, it restricts referenda and other school funding mechanisms. Now, there's been some changes and some amendments to it. It was for two years or seven hundred-plus days, and they've amended it now to be one year, that you would have to wait after a failed referendum. But again, even with that amendment, most of the people who testified were against the bill, in opposition of the bill, including a strong presence from school board members and administrators. I wanted the board to know the other districts that did send resolutions about their disappointment in this legislation. So besides Eau Claire, Altoona has sent a resolution, Bearbu has sent a resolution, Fort Atkinson, River Valley, and Stoughton. So, and there's a couple of other things that have been postponed as well. I think people are getting quite active in expressing their opinion. They had a bill in how to appropriate rooms for transgender students. That's been postponed. Again, it was dictating and not allowing people to keep their local control on that one. But we'll have to watch and see as it comes back up. And I think that's the end of my legislative report.
Okay. Good. Thank you. All right. Next is our consent resolution. For the consent resolution, board members have given background material already, or we've already discussed these, and some of them are fairly routine items. They'll be voted all on, all at once, unless a board member decides to pull one to discuss. So I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session, December 7th, 2015. I would entertain a motion to approve the financial report of November 2015. I would entertain a motion to approve the gifts in the amount of $8,737.52 for the period of November 1st through 30th, 2015.
Can you pull that, please?
Pull. Okay. Mark that here. And I would entertain a motion to approve the human resources report of employment, employment report.
Pull that, please.
So, okay. So we have two to pull, so I entertain a motion to approve the first two on that list. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion for Commissioner Luganbill. I have a second from Commissioner Dux. Discussion. All those, let me see here. We need to be a roll call vote for this, so Sandy, when you have a chance, we'll do a roll call vote. Okay. It's clear. Go ahead. Take your time.
We're all about mentoring in the Eau Claire school district.
Good example. While we're waiting, maybe I just wanted to comment that one of the reports is sideways that we got, so maybe we could have it vertical.
Oh, coming up. Oh, oh, in here?
If you right-click on it, you should be able to rotate it on your desktop.
Okay. I'm not that talented.
I'll have to help you. Are we ready for the roll call? Go ahead.
Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambuch-Boil?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you. So Commissioner Johnson, you had pulled the gifts. Question?
Yeah. And I'll just apologize, because I read these during the day on Monday generally, and didn't have a chance to call down and ask my question. So we see, not just on this gift report, but on several gift reports, that there has been substantial donations for a Red Flint hockey tournament. And I'm just curious, if nobody can answer me tonight, maybe I can get, you can get back to me on why there's one particular hockey tournament that needs such large donations that wouldn't be covered under normal athletic budgets.
I think Abby has the detail on that.
I do. I pulled it up, because I was curious. So that is a tournament that Memorial Hockey puts on. It's a fundraiser that they do, and it happens the weekend after Thanksgiving. So it's a fundraiser for their athletic program. It's not one of their normal hockey tournaments. And so they go out and they solicit donations from the community and probably just hockey parents. But I can get more information if you would like.
So the officials and their ice fees and all of that wouldn't be covered under their regular, regular hockey schedule? This is in addition to, so they do it as a fundraiser, and they take that money to pay for their program costs?
You are correct.
All right. Nice to see you all ready for that. Okay. So I would entertain a motion to approve the gifts in the amount of $8,737.52 for that period, November 1st through 30th.
So move.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hambuch-Boil.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Vu. Any further discussion? Commissioner Johnson?
I'm, I'm just, I'm going to explain why I'm going to abstain, because I've asked in past years for an equity review of the district, and I know that we, we get some of that in, you know, academic scores and whatnot. But I'm concerned that, because we obviously want to encourage gifts from the community, we don't turn any away, I think that we should be encouraging gifters to give equally. And so my concern is when one program is doing a lot of fundraising, then they have control over those funds and maybe spending in a way that other sports and schools can't. So I don't know that's to be true, but I think that's, we need an equity review to determine if those gifts are making things unbalanced on the ground.
All right. Thank you for that comment. Commissioner Dux?
If I may, Dr. Hardbeck, in our last foundation board meeting, we talked about special funds that go to certain groups, and we were concerned that we didn't have enough general giving, so it would benefit all. So I think that will, that discussion will continue. But we have lots of designated gifts, not undesigned, which is more what we need, we do characterize it that way.
Well, it's always nice to have some undesigned gifts, because then you can kind of spread it according to need within the schools.
Good point. Commissioner Hambuch-Boil?
So, this is, I mean, we've talked about this, but as long as we're having this conversation, do we have a consistent, timely equity review that we do as a district or a board?
Go ahead.
Yes, we do. An equity report for you with the opening of schools report, and we compare not only student achievement data, but also participation rates, hiring, that kind of thing, where the new teachers are, where the veteran teachers are, length of service.
That I know, but I'm thinking, I'm thinking about the giving, or the fact.
No, we don't, but we can include that in next year's report, and we'll give you an update sooner than that to answer Commissioner Johnson's question.
Okay. All right. I think we need a roll call vote on that.
Okay. Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambuch-Boil?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Abstain.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Human Resources Employment Report. Commissioner Johnson, you got a question?
Well, I know that there's been a lot of filling of positions in this building, in particular with the realignment with teaching and learning, and I've noticed a couple of executive assistants and support staff associated with that. And so I wondered if those were open positions or new positions, and if so, how we found the money to fill those.
Okay. Go ahead.
Some of those are new positions. Some are just kind of moving around as, as a supervisor moved to something new, then the person went with them. But the ones that, that you see that are new, where the money came from for that, that's all part of the original, what we kind of term as the pot of money, from the positions that we eliminated, didn't fill, restructured, shifted around and reorganized. So there's, there's a kind of a standing, again, pot of money that we use to go to when we fill all these new positions, and then when there's no money left, then we don't add any more positions.
Okay. Good. All right. I would entertain a motion to approve the employment report.
So move.
Motion for Commissioner Zhang. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Vu, seconded. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Individually considered resolution, we have to pay our bills, so we have a motion for that. So I would accept a motion to approve the payment of all bills in the amount of $4,314,498.37 and net payroll in the amount of $3,119,709.63 for the period of November 1st through the 30th of 2015.
I so move.
I have a motion, Commissioner Dux. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Zhang. Any discussion on that? Okay. We'll need a roll call vote on this when you are ready.
Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambuch-Boil?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Committee reports. So we have a number of them tonight. Please, board members, remind me about public forum at the end of each of these. I try to make a note for myself. So first, on the Compensation Committee report, we're just going to get an update on where those committees are at, and see how that impacts some of our decisions coming up.
Okay. So the first committee report is an update on the Compensation Committee, and where we've been since the last board meeting, when I updated everybody on, on the work of the group. So Abby and I will be taking you through any progress that we've made since the last time we presented to you, and it should be pretty succinct. So the first thing that we wanted to talk about just a bit was the projected timeline for the Compensation Committee work. So if you remember, back in December of 2014, so just over a year ago, Bob Butler, our Wasby facilitator, came and presented to the board about the proposal for this work. At that point in time, he indicated that the timeline typically ranges from three, three months to 12 months to complete the work that we were looking to do. However, he shared with us that the average length of time to complete the restructuring of compensation models, on an average, would be anywhere from four to five months. So based on the time that we began our first meetings with the committees with Bob, that was in April of 2015, so a projected completion date would have been September of 2015, if we looked at the four to five-month average time span. Obviously, we are now in December, and we don't have that work completed, so ECASD is more, needing more than the average time. And part of that is due to the complexity of where we are versus where we were, and where we're trying to get to, and the fact that we involve so many stakeholders in that conversation. I think when you have a smaller district, you can probably limit the amount of people around the table, but when we have the district the size that we do, there's a lot of voices that need to come to the table when we look at modifying a compensation system. that need to come to the table when we look at modifying a compensation system. So as you obviously know, we are not at that completion date from September, because we're still working our way through this. You've seen this grid before many times. It's on all of the executive reports for the compensation committee within board docs. This indicates that we've met just shy of 20 times with Bob and the selected committees. And obviously, during that time, you've been updated on the work that the committee has done. But since that April of 2015 time, up until last week, the group has met periodically, the groups have met periodically to try to address where it is we need to go with the compensation model. So since we reported to you last, all three committees have met with Abby and Bob and I. And there was three consistent things that happened with all three groups. And I'll share those with you on this slide, and then we'll break it down into special things that each group spoke of that pertain more so to their own group. So the first one that everybody talked about was the longevity process. We really focused on not losing what we already have and trying to find a way to build it into the new models. So for an example, if I'm an employee who makes $15 an hour as my hourly rate, and I get a 50 cent longevity bump, I'd be making 15, 50 an hour. So as we look to move that person into the new compensation model, we would place them as if they were making 15, 50 an hour and tried to build that in versus having the separate longevity component. And then, once people were transferred into the new system, then we'd look to include and incorporate the longevity recommendation that the longevity committee made two years ago about bringing some consistency to that program and have that be built into the model as well. So all groups talked about how longevity plays into their roles and what it would look like moving forward. Additionally, there was ample conversation, which you heard during the public comment this morning, I'm sorry, earlier tonight, about the 75% of market. A lot of conversation about that, trying to figure out where those figures came from, how much of the 75% pertains to each employee group, and how is that calculated? We had a lot of conversation about that with all three groups. And there were some inconsistencies with the figures we'd been working on, and Abby will probably talk to that a bit later in the presentation. But that 75% of market figure spoke about in depth with each of the three committees.
Okay. Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
When you say 75% of market figure, does that mean 75% of the median? Or is that going to be talked about later?
Abby will address that.
Okay.
Because that was the same question that everybody had. And I think one of the speakers earlier talked about terminology, that the terminology of where those calculations were coming from was unclear. And so that's what Abby will clarify. And then the final thing all three groups talked about was the transition to the new model. And making sure that we're not moving anybody backward and that at a minimum, people are looking at at least a $500 increase. So those were the three things that were consistent across all three groups. And then there were specific things that only certain groups talked about. So for example, in the non-affiliated group, we talked about the per diem inequities. And this has come before you before, Bob, I'm sorry, Dan has talked about that numerous times, especially with the administrative group, the fact that some employee groups that have less contract days make more per day than those who have more contract days. And so that's a huge inequity within the group that we need to work through. To do that, we looked at the number of contract days, not only as a potential remedy for some of the per diem inequities, but also the fact that we have administrative contracts that, in terms of their contract day length on their contracts, may be out of date based on what it is requiring of those positions. So for example, there's been talk for a while about elementary principal positions and that not being a 10-month position any longer due to all of the increased mandates that we have. So there's been that conversation. We haven't come up with anything formal. At this point, it's just been discussion, but that's been part of what we've looked at for the non-affiliated group, as we look at specific things just to that group. I can tell you, at this point in time, the committee's not ready to make a recommendation to the board regarding any compensation model coming forward. There's just simply too much that still needs to be done in that area. For the hourly group, some things that we talked about in addition to the three consistent things earlier on was non-salary compensation items. And again, you heard about this earlier in the public comment, but vacation days, bodily fluid increments, those are some of those items that we would consider non-salary schedule compensation items. So the money doesn't directly go on the salary schedule, but it is money that the district sets aside for different things related to some of the hourly positions. And then we spoke a lot about special education assistance and their responsibilities. The fact that our candidacy pool is very limited for these positions, and a lot of that has to do to the responsibilities and the pay that goes along with it. So there's been ample conversation about those things as well. Again, the committee's not ready to make a recommendation. You heard that tonight in the public comment. There's just way too much information that still needs to be dived into deeper in these areas, and they're hoping to do that as we move forward.
I'm wondering if we can think of a different name than bodily fluid increments.
That's actually a term that transferred over from contract.
Yeah.
But yes, we have been having those conversations as well. And then for our certified group. With this group, we talked a lot about movement through the schedule. So for a new person coming into the district, do they see a career pathway? How long will it take them to get from the beginning of the schedule to the end of the schedule? And I can say that the committee had a lot of conversation about what the board had shared last time we were here regarding artificial barriers to move through the schedule. And specifically, we had talked last time about professional development and requiring people to have additional professional development outside of the days we already have built in as a kind of a stopgap to make sure that not everybody moves forward on the schedule. That wasn't something that it seemed like the committee, as well as some of the board members, were interested in. And that the criteria that we look for in terms of movement through the schedule should be meaningful. So some of those examples would be, obviously, having a full year of service in the district. So if you came to us for only two months, that obviously wouldn't equate to a full year of service, and so therefore, you wouldn't move forward the next year. But then also a successful evaluation. So anybody who's on a plan of improvement or didn't receive a satisfactory evaluation wouldn't be able to move forward on the schedule for the following year. But in terms of those artificial barriers, there was a lot of conversation about not having those in place and looking at a schedule that, even though it might take longer, we weren't going to have to make people jump through hoops that didn't pertain to their professional well-being just to prevent people from moving forward from a financial standpoint. So again, a lot of conversation about that. And as the same as the other two committees, not ready to make a recommendation to you about what models that looks like or how much money could be associated with it, because there's simply just more work to be done. When we look at funding and calculations for new compensation models, obviously, the committee work's not finalized. I can tell you, and you heard about it tonight, members of all three committees are really concerned about what was going to be presented here tonight. Because when we met last week, it was a lot of talk about the board needs to have a number. The board needs to talk about referendum and how compensation may be part of that. Therefore, we need to have at least a range. A lot of apprehension about throwing numbers out to you tonight that weren't vetted through anybody. The committees haven't decided on which options to even bring forward for you to consider, nor have they had an opportunity to go to their colleagues within the district and say, this is what the committee came up with. What are your thoughts on this? To be able to get some vetted information. So the figures aren't final. We obviously need to do some more calculations based upon upcoming meetings that we're going to have. And while the salary structures have been explored, there's all those other cost options, such as the longevity that we spoke about, the potential restoration of vacation days, an additional holiday pay that you heard about earlier, that we still need to study and then calculate some numbers for you. And until all of that happens, none of the committees feel comfortable bringing those numbers forward to you because they simply just don't have them. So next steps.
Great. So I just want to thank you for all the work and the committee's work. And I have to say, when we first started, I was totally unrealistic about, because I looked at other districts, but I think they were smaller districts.
Correct.
Of how long they took. And just for the board, and we'll talk about referendum in the next item, but remember that one reason we had it on tonight was to talk about its impact on referendum decisions. As you can see, they're not far enough along for us to really have a good estimate of what staffing costs would be for any educational initiatives we'd want to do and so forth. So just think about that when we talk about referendum, because we don't have figures right now. And I don't want, whatever I, my goal, I don't want to damage this process that you're working through, working with employees to come up with a good plan. So keep those things in mind while we go through our discussion tonight. Commissioner Hamburg Boyle.
And I want, you know, to say this too, for the people that are watching or the public, is that these committees have worked really, really hard on all the things that we hadn't looked deeply into for a very long time. How many employees do we have?
Over 1,400.
1,400.
I would like to point out that Chris is on one of the committees.
1,400 employees, and they deeply looked at each job, job descriptions, really had deep conversations about that, what that would look like, which really says something about our district as to our culture and the inclusion of how we want that information and that transparency for what we're going to step forward for in making a decision about a referendum. This directly relates to educational programming. It probably directly relates more than anything that we will talk about as far as a referendum is concerned. So the work has been awesome. It's just taking longer. We're a bigger district. When we work with Bob, he brings up River Falls, and he brings up a lot of the smaller districts. And I don't think, as he described some of that work either, that it was done with the same in-depth conversations. So I think we should be pretty proud of that piece. It's just a slog. It's just a slog that hopefully will be sustainable and it will be so understandable for our community that will help with the referendum as well.
Commissioner Zhang.
I'm very happy that you didn't just throw a number at us because you actually took the feedbacks from the individual groups. But I'm a little stressed because I was hoping that we will get something so we can move forward with the planning for the referendums, or at least the questions anyways. Do you have a feel for how much longer it may take?
Oh, he puts you on the spot.
Be honest.
I would venture to say several months, easily several months. It would be different if the only thing that all these committee members did was work on this. But in addition to this, they have their positions within the district that they spend not only their allocated time, but then time outside of that allocated time working on, trying to do what we need to do to be able to move student achievement forward. So if the only thing we were going to do was going to be focus on compensation, I'd say that timeline would be a lot shorter. But knowing that everybody works very hard at what they do for us to begin with, I would anticipate that we're talking multiple months.
Two, oh, go ahead, Commissioner. I just responded. Commissioner Zhang, I understand your concern, and I did two, and I do two. I think the only answer, since they're still working on it, we don't have, there's really only two possibilities that I see right now, unless you see something else, is one, we have an estimate somehow of the cost, but that puts a number out there that we're not sure about. Or we don't include, in a referendum in April, things that include staffing costs. Or we wait. I think those are probably the three options that I would see based on that, on your answer. Come in. Respond.
Yes, please. I would not want to just throw a number out there, especially one that we cannot validate when a voter is asking us. So that, to me, is out of the question. The waiting, I don't know if you can wait, so.
Right, right. Commissioner Luganbill, I think you were next. Go ahead. So what, as of today, what preliminary cost outs have been done so far?
Turn you over to the numbers.
Okay, that's the next part, I guess.
My turn to be on the hot seat.
Good segue. Go ahead.
Well, we have done costings a couple of different ways because there's so many things that are unknown. For example, longevity. So I have preliminary calcs moving people to a new schedule, but the difficulty is, do you want them just placed on the schedule? Do you want a minimum of, like, case, at a $500 increase? And then for the certified group, it's very different because right now, it's based upon educational credits to move across. And now we're going to, like, a linear schedule, and so every year, you move. And so then, I have some of that placement done, but again, it's not including longevity. And that longevity will make a big difference for many of our teachers that are here. If we look at the food service group, we've actually presented the numbers to both of them because Fund 50 is a standalone business. And so it's very critical to make sure that whatever projections we have, they're accurate, and our food service program can support that. And that's a much smaller group, and so it's easier to predict and to place people. Our hourly group, right now, we're having a lot of discussions with our hourly group because the 75% of market is not exactly what we were thinking it was. I spent a couple hours on the phone today with CBIZ from the original study to try to figure out what is 75% of the market, because my understanding was the board wants us to be at 75% of market. What I learned was that 75% of market is 75% of the median, which could be below the market minimum, and we don't want to do that to our employees. So for the hourly group, we need to have some conversations with Bob to try to bring that back to the table and really recircle that group. So at this point, I don't feel any, I don't feel comfortable at all with any of the calcs for that group. Non-affiliated, we've had some really good discussions, and I was feeling pretty confident about the numbers. The problem with non-affiliated is those per diem inequities, and that's not something that the committee can actually solve, because I don't think it's the committee's job to decide what the contract day should look like. And so I feel like of the groups that are the closest, probably the non-affiliated group is the closest, once we can figure out how to handle and get some direction on how to handle those contract days. But hourly, I, yeah, I mean, I can throw numbers out there, but I'm not comfortable. The numbers I'm comfortable with would be to place them moving forward one year on the existing schedules. And I don't think that's what we want to use, because I think a new schedule is going to be very different.
Did you have a presentation you wanted to go through further? Or, Joe, did you have a follow-up?
Oh, sorry. It is.
I don't know. Did you want to?
I just have one slide. So just the slide that's up on there right now.
Okay, why don't you explain that, and then we'll go to questions.
Okay. Yep. So again, you guys have heard this in the public comment tonight, but the committee concerns the restoration of the vacation days, additional holiday pay, is there any flexible use of sick leave? What should that percentage of market target for salary adjustment be? I think we're going to need some guidance probably from the board as to what do you want to see? Cost of internal inequities, that kind of revolves around the per diems that we've talked about. Also, imbalances of the per diem rates, the cost of the new salary schedules, because we're changing things up, they're going to look a lot different. And then just putting together all of the total costs. And so it's going to take a while to get that big bottom number that we need. But again, we want to make sure that we're very accurate in what we're projecting, so that way then that will help us communicate and that way then, you know, help the referendum as well.
Commissioner Johnson.
So I wouldn't want us to get in the way of the work of the committees and, you know, the methodical process that you must take. And if it takes two years, it takes two years. But if we go to referendum in April and we're looking at, this is how much money we are projected we're going to need next year, the year after, et cetera, et cetera, doing the exact same things we're doing now, that's one amount we could go to. I think that there has been a lot of pent-up demand since the last referendum failed eight-plus years ago. And we've, I think that there's some will here within the community and on this board to consider some of those things that were cut, whether it's field trips or, you know, athletic fees, or the compensation that has been frozen for a number of years. And we, I think we've been pushing for the last couple of years to get to referendum this April so that we can not continue to drain our capital resources in order to keep doing what we're doing. And to keep doing what we're doing, we need X amount more, and we have to ask our community for that. And so I don't know that we need to get way down into that list of things, if you want to go back to that bulleted list. I don't think that we can let that get in the way. But if we don't go to referendum in April, we can't even keep doing what we're doing. So we have to go to referendum and say, we need this much more money each year. And so if you were to use the existing schedules and structures and whatever to hold people, you know, to get people back where they belong, or to get people to, you know, a basic market rate that's competitive, then that's the number I want. And because right now, nobody's getting longevity, nobody's getting vacation days, nobody's getting more per diem days, nobody is getting advancements on the salary schedule. So if we wait another year, you get none of those things and no more money in the pot. So I would prefer for you to tell us, if we were to use the old schedule, this is how much more money we would need to get people to where they would have a decent wage to to, to pay their way. And frankly, I don't really care if you call it lane movements or longevity or vacation days or whatever. The details of it, I feel like you guys can work that out for the next six months or a year or more if you need to and say, you know, we're going, this is the pot of money we need and then we're going to decide the details on how to spread it out because I don't think the board necessarily needs to work out those details. So, I, I feel like you guys are, you know, in, in the detailed, you know, like at the ground stage and we don't need to be. We need a big picture number and we're going to tell the community why we need it because our people are underpaid and then you're going to continue to work because it's not going to be implemented until July first, correct? So, you're, you're going to continue to work on what, how you're going to divvy up that money next year if we ask the community to go above and beyond what we're currently doing. Because if we don't ask them for something in April, you're not even going to get what you're currently doing. We're going to be looking at cuts. So, so I want that cost out even if it is a, a big number and we're not, we don't make promises on how you're going to divvy it up between the individual employees because I don't think that's what the, the community needs, needs that kind of detail.
You guys have a follow-up on that because I think that's a good discussion to have. Commissioner Dux?
Well, I disagree somewhat with you. I, I understand where you're coming from and how that seems attractive to do it that way, but I really think with this referendum, we have to be, have very good reasons and, and show what the actual needs are. We can't just say, let's get a pot of money and go. You know how hard it is because you've worked on referendum before and they want to know and I think the employees want to know what they're, what they might make so we can get everybody supporting it. So, I, I just don't think it quite works that way myself.
I think Commissioner Hammaboy was next. Did you have one or no?
Well, yeah.
No, Bobby.
When you look at the big picture, Abby, this might be a question. If we didn't go to referendum in April and we were able to transparently get through what this, what this piece would look like, what effect would that have on our working capital and our borrowing ability if we went to working capital?
We would definitely have to go into working capital for next year. Based upon the projections right now, the, the projection for the sixteen-seventeen year, based upon what we know in fifteen-sixteen, is about a five-point-eight million dollar projection. Now, we know from past history that we've projected high and we've come in less than that. So, do I know exactly what that number would be that we'd go in? No. But I don't imagine that it would be the full five-point-eight and we're still working on fine-tuning that number just to make sure that we have everything in there that we're expecting and a lot of it's based upon student counts, which we won't know until, you know, next fall. The other hard part is to project the range. I mean, the range could be anywhere from a million dollars all the way to four million dollars. And so, I agree that you don't need to be involved in the details, but how do you go to referendum when the range could be all over the board? And so, I think for me personally, that's what's really difficult in providing those and I can share with you what it is to move everybody forward one step. We had that at the last board meeting. I could also share with you the numbers based upon C-Biz, just bringing everybody up to the minimum wage or the, yeah, the minimum market. And I can share those with you because you've already seen those. But again, the committee is really looking at redefining those salary schedules and being more competitive. So, I could give you some numbers, but I don't know that those are the numbers that we want to use.
Abby, could you go in a little more detail what gives that range of one to four with the consider, I know it's like one step versus, you know.
Sure.
Making whole, you know, just, because we talked about that in budget committee.
We did talk about that in budget committee. Yep. Just give me a second because I, I copied the slide that we had at Budget Development Committee. Yes. Okay. So, this is one that we shared at the last board meeting and also at Budget Development Committee. And this is maintaining the existing current salary schedule for each of the groups and moving them forward one step. So, you can see right there for certified staff, it's eight-hundred-and-thirty thousand. For classified, it's eleven thousand. Cooks, it's eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Custodian, seventeen thousand. Non-affiliated, seventy-eight thousand. So, without a CPI increase for this year on the existing schedule, it's nine-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars. If we go with the CPI increase for this year of one-point-six-two percent, that number grows to nine-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand. And this is assuming just moving them forward one year. If we try to move them forward four years, because basically everybody's been frozen for four years, the cost for the certified staff alone is about two-point-six million. And I didn't share all the numbers for all the other groups because the certified number would be the biggest. But that's just salary. That's not including any CPI increases and that's also not including benefits that would go up as well. So, see why it's difficult to, to give you that range because it can be all over the place.
Commissioner Johnson?
But that's exactly what I think that we need. We know that we're locked in on insurance benefits for a couple of years, so that's not, shouldn't be a factor. So, if we're looking at, they've been frozen for four years, you're looking at, I assume, close to that four million dollar figure to kind of bring people back for where they've been frozen. I mean, that's, 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 that's the big number I want. And then, you know, whether you, you know, I know that you're not going to use the exact same salary schedule in the past and so if you've got, okay, you're creating this new thing and you've got, you know, four million dollars across all of the different employee groups to impose the new schedule, I mean, that's where the, the detailed work gets. And so, it's not that we'd be, you know, just picking a number. It'd be, how do we get our employees to a market range, whether it's the minimum or the median, so that they're in a competitive range and that competitive range is X number to X number? So, I would be comfortable, for example, adding four million to our referendum question or, you know, at least discussing kind of where in the, you know, on either side of that we would fall and then let the committee continue to work while we say, our employees are underpaid. We're going to add four million dollars to our budget and then our employees are going to figure out the fairest way to create a new salary schedule so that people, the internal equities are worked out. I think that's the, the big picture that the, the community needs. I don't think the community needs to debate whether longevity is important or vacation days are important. I think then with too many details, they, that just gets in the way of understanding the big picture.
Okay, good. Comments? This is a great discussion. This is the kind of thing we need to hear and decide and figure out what would come up for the board next time if we do it. Commissioner Luganville?
So, I have a couple of questions. Has C-Biz spoken at the compensation committee meetings?
No, because the compensation committee were, were formed after that. So, C-Biz gave their report to the board August of two thousand fourteen and then Bob's original presentation was December of two thousand fourteen. And that's when the compensation committees were formed.
And Bob did the market comparison and brought that to the committee?
No.
Initially at the start of the meetings?
The, the market value that I've been working off of, that, when I had a conversation with Bob, that was based upon C-Biz data.
Where, what school districts were included? Was it based on size? Was it area districts? Was it?
Yes. It was, there was a little bit of both. I know, do you know which ones responded?
So, the board had specifically asked for comparables that we routinely use for a variety of things. So, we have school districts that are similar size and we also have neighboring districts because it provides a very different picture. We're not going to lose probably a food service worker to Janesville or Wausau, but we may a teacher or an administrator. But when we're looking at Altoona and Chippewa Falls, we could lose any of our people to those areas even though they're not as big as we are. So, this, I think there were fourteen specific districts that the board asked that C-Biz include in the study and we call those our peer, our peer comparables. And then in addition to that, then they have their, you know, just voluminous database of all the positions even outside of education.
I have a question.
Commissioner Dux?
I should have asked this when we had the financial report, but I was looking at OPEB and I didn't see any payment out.
For OPEB? Yep. We usually pay that when we can afford to pay it, so it's usually not until February after we get our property tax settlement. So, there's usually a payment in February and then the final payment, because we have to do a calc based upon what actually happened and that usually happens in July. So, we usually only have just the two payments per year.
And does holiday pay have, is that connected to hourly employees?
Yes. That was the group. That was, yes. Can I go, can I go back to the benefits that you were referring to before? It would be the social security and the WRS that would change. So, those two specifically, not the health insurance, but as salaries go up, those two items would change as well.
Commissioner Luganville?
So, with you in this new role and the data of the committees and looking at it, have you found that you've had the most up-to-date data that you can possibly use? Have you found there have been inconsistencies? What has that kind of looked like in terms of tools for the committee to use?
I can tell you as recently as this morning, the, the report that I had been relying on was different than the report that was provided to the board from C-Biz. And so, part of my question for C-Biz was the seventy-five percent of the market. I couldn't identify exactly what is market value. So, I got that clarified. Well, then we started looking at the detail and realized that the report that I had been using on was actually different in some categories and some of the hourly employees were different than the report that was brought to the board. So, that I didn't know about until today and so that's just one of the things that we need to work through. And again, I think right now for the hourly group, that seventy-five percent of market is probably the biggest question mark. I know what it is now and it is not what I thought it was. And so, that was part of our conversations last week and then, so now, we need to have a discussion with Bob because how he explained it to me was not how I was understanding it and so we need to make sure that we're getting it correct because if you use seventy-five percent of the median, you could put yourself below the minimum and we don't want to do that. And the information that C-Biz provided to the board in their presentation in August was to bring those people below minimum up to minimum, so basically twenty-five percent. And I don't think.
Twenty-five percentile, yeah.
Twenty-five percentile, yep. And I'm not sure that that's where we want to go. And so, some additional conversations that Kay and I have had and we need to talk to Bob and just figure out and probably get some guidance from the board is what, what is your target goal? Because to make everybody at a hundred percent of market would be very, very difficult. I mean, even if we just look at the salary for teachers, the proposed schedule starts at forty-one for a bachelor's and forty-five for a master's. And, and when we look at the market value, the range is like forty-seven to fifty-seven, I think. And so, a little bit different than, than what you're looking at. And so, then you can add, you know, talk about throwing out ranges. I mean, that's a, that's a big difference in just what we're looking at to what the market's telling us. And so, just to be able to understand all those calculations and put them out, they're not hard to do, they're very time-consuming because like Chris said before, you're looking position by position and looking to make sure, and then you're kind of looking at each line item to make sure that where are people being placed, where are they currently and making sure they're being placed in the appropriate place on the new schedule.
Let's go to the next agenda. Oh, any public comments on compensation committee? Go ahead, Mark Goings. I remembered. Go ahead.
My name is Mark Goings. I live at E-17450 County Road V in Augusta, Wisconsin. And looking at just the compensation studies that we're looking at, one of the things I would remind the board as well as the community, our compensation study, the board first heard from that about a year and a half ago. And for those of you who do not remember what that study, the, the, the full version of the study, essentially it found that our employees are somewhere between behind to way behind to not even in the ballpark. And that was a year and a half ago. Since that time, we've fallen farther behind. Since that time, if you look at the last school year into this school year, we've had the largest exodus of staff we've ever had in this district. One of the things that, when that compensation study came before the board, the person who presented that talked about, one of the things that, that they recommended was that when you change from one system to the other, you do it as a whole. Because if you piecemeal it, it can mess things up and create winners and losers. So, in the last year and a half, we've been working on what does that transition look like? How does that get done? And yes, the compensation committees, they have met the twenty-some times. Each one of those, though, keep in mind, has only meant a fraction of that. One of the things I guess I would ask the board is, the Wasby facilitator has done a wonderful job, but he's also facilitating districts all across the state. When we look at the list of things that we haven't even talked about yet, and I have other things on here, we haven't talked, on there, we didn't have national boards, dual certification, things like that. We have lots of these subtopics. Do we as the Eau Claire community need to have the facilitator sit with us during each one of those meetings for all of these subtopics? It could take, as someone said earlier, it might take a couple more years. Keep in mind, going back to compensation study, which came out a year and a half ago, we are behind and we are way behind. We can't afford another exodus this summer like we had last summer. I do think that we have people who can talk about many of these things as a group. Yes, our facilitator could, could work with it, could advise, but does not necessarily have to be there for hour by hour, every single one of those discussions. Many of those things we can get done on our own, come back to the larger committee, committee and talk about those things. So, those are a few things for the board to consider. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Go ahead, Dan.
My name is Dan Wilson, thirty-seven fifty-three Patton Street, Eau Claire. I'm a teacher at Memorial. And just to piggyback on what Mark said, we throw some numbers out. I am just newly on to the compensation committee for teachers, so I'm still getting my feet wet with that and trying to get a feel for everything. But if we throw out numbers, for the sake of throwing out a number, let's say it makes everybody whole for the last four years. Okay, that's a number the community has. The thought of ever coming forward with a schedule for thriving or for growth probably is not going to happen because if we come up with a number that keeps the status quo or even allows for that four-year growth, that's the referendum number we use, then we have no room to go forward further. We'd have to go to another referendum in another couple of years to add that extra growth. And that I just don't think is functional and I just wanted to get that information out. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, great. So, let's go and talk now about the different possible referendums and then we can get more into discussion about what would go in a referendum and the possibilities of them and I'll need guidance from the board on, for the next meeting on this.
Dr. Hartebeck is going to start off our presentation.
So, I think, you know, as we've listened to the conversation tonight, you know, we have to ask ourselves if we're going out for referendum, do we have internal unity about our needs? You know, we started out a discussion talking about maintaining rather than cutting in terms of the deficit that we were facing. That conversation over the summer and maybe due to our strategic planning and other things kind of morphed into are we going to survive or are we going to thrive? And then we continue to see the questions about the compensation study. So, what I'd like to do before Abby begins her presentation is review a little bit of the history that brought us to tonight's discussion. And over the past few months, we've been, we've had lots and lots of discussion about whether or not we should go to referendum and if we did go to referendum, where would we go? When would we go? So, we began our discussion looking about how to address this deficit that we were facing over the next two years. And I really think we can only project for two years because of the unpredictability of school budgeting in Wisconsin. We know that for the next, for this biennial budget, we're getting no additional funding through the per pupil revenue. So, as we began this discussion, we started talking about addressing other necessities to, that would be required to operate and maintain the school district. We talked about our deferred facility needs. We talked about repairs. We talked about technology needs. We talked about the challenge that we were facing in meeting our class. We talked about the challenge that we were facing in meeting our class-sized targets. And within our study, I think we became increasingly aware that due to previous cuts, where we had cut over 50 positions, we had deferred maintenance, we had deferred modernization of some of our buildings, we had looked at things like athletic fees, field trips, those kinds of cuts, that if we cut anymore, we would seriously be impacting the delivery of our core programs and services to our students. And when, you know, our current reality is that when we look at how we compare to other districts, particularly like just in comparable expenses like maintenance of facilities, per pupil transportation, our debt service, we're about 8.4% below the state average. And that comes out to about $700 per student in these areas. And when we look at the per pupil spending with comparable districts, we're spending approximately $350 or 3.5% less than the state average. So, I think our current reality is that ECASD has traditionally been a very fiscally conservative and deliberate spending district. And we're at a point where we just can't make any more cuts or cut any more corners. And I think we all understand that. You know, consider that ECASD is the eighth-largest school district in Wisconsin, and we are ranked 272 in spending. And, you know, Mark talked a little bit about the exodus of employees that we've had, but we also, as a district, we have more seniority of our staff. It's slightly higher than across the state, and our veteran teachers are paid somewhere between $3,000 and $4,000 less than comparable districts. And those are our veteran teachers. So, you know, I think part of the discussion about any referendum, in addition to things like safety and security and class size and technology and facilities, has got to look at the needs of compensation and our staff. We are in a people-dependent business. And when we talk about cutting educational programs or impacting educational programs, that is about our people. It's the people who create our programs. It's the people who are in front of our kids day-to-day. And I know I'm preaching to the choir, but I think that this whole idea of compensation in the referendum, it's really the elephant in the room. I'm not sure that, as a school district, we are going to achieve some kind of internal unity about why we need to go out to the community and why we need to ask for their help until we really get this matter of compensation kind of, our arms wrapped around it. Because if we don't, we're not being transparent with the community. We can put a cost on all of our other things, safety and security, class size, facilities, technology, but we haven't been able to put a cost on compensation. And that seems to be the thing that has been more or less driving a lot of our concern about the deficits that we have. So, what you're going to see tonight in Abby's numbers is, I think it's taken us beyond what our deficit is and what it would cost to kind of maintain our services, to, as Chris would say, a deeper level, where we're looking at, what would it take to really take us to the next level as a school district, minus that compensation piece? And my very strong recommendation would be that we somehow address the compensation piece. So, Abby, if you want to start with the, talking about our security upgrades and needs, I think that might be a good place to begin.
Yep.
I appreciate the summary. Thank you. Go ahead.
All right. So, as Dr. Hartebeck said, I'm going to kind of walk you through the things that we know and we've been talking about for the last couple of months as far as the referendum goes. At the top of the list would be safety and security. We need to get those security upgrades done, so we have visible entrances, building entry buzzers, security cameras, fire alarms, get the playground paving, the classroom audio enhancement, and the PA systems done. That would be a cost of about $5.2 million. If we want to meet targeted class size at the elementary schools and at the secondary schools, at the elementary level, it would be about $462,000. And at the secondary schools, if we looked at the class sizes, reducing them from 24 to 27, down to 22 to 25, that would cost us about $1.4 million.
Can you go back to the first one?
I can. This one? Welcome. Okay, so this would be additional costs to meet targeted class size at the elementary level and also at the secondary level. So, 1.8 million. Technology. This would be enhancing our current technology program. It would be a rollout of Chromebooks and laptops. We would go one-to-one devices in grades seven through 12. There would be some additional staffing costs with the rolling out of the additional devices. There would be some additional computing devices, and we would move towards a more mobile device for our staff instead of desktops. And that happens currently on a four-year rotation, and we would maintain that four-year rotation. But another $5 million.
Commissioner Johnson.
5.1 per year or 5.1 as a one-time expenditure so that it's sustainable within the regular budget?
The initial cost would be 5.1, and then after that, I think it's about, Jim, help me out, 4.6 maybe? Okay.
It's actually a similar question for the safety and security. That was one, one time to 5.2.
That is a one, yes, correct.
Yeah, there are some, it's a little bit more at the beginning for the safety and security and for some network upgrades with fiber. But this is more towards the four number as you go on, correct?
So, 4 million annually after this, for this part?
After the first two years.
Okay.
I have a question.
Commissioner Duick.
Does this, with class size, does that involve Sage or not? How does that involve Sage?
It does not involve Sage. It wouldn't change the Sage program at all. This is those schools that don't have Sage to get them to the targeted class size. Okay?
So, the safety and security would be a one-time expenditure and then nothing outside of the regular facilities budget?
That would be my understanding correct. Yep, this would be to get us back up-to-date of the things that are on our big project list that we haven't been able to get to.
Rich. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Johnson.
Maybe you could, because we're talking about maintenance right now, could you, I've been getting very different numbers as far as how much we should be spending per square foot. Is there an industry standard that we should be spending? Because I've been getting different numbers, and it's making my decision a lot harder than it needs to.
I apologize because I knew you were going to ask that question, and I didn't get it on my slide. So, currently, we're spending about 70 cents per square foot on the district, and that's our maintenance cost. That gives us about $1.6 million a year. Industry average on the low end is $1.50 per square foot. That puts us at about 3.6 million. That's, you know, kind of the low part of industry standard. The ideal industry standard is $2 a square foot. So, that's where we're getting that range. I know I've said this multiple times, 3.6 to 4.8. That's the range of $1.50 a square foot to $2 a square foot. So, ideally, we'd like to be in that $1.50 to $2 range, but realistically, we're spending about 70 cents per square foot right now. And that's why that list keeps growing and those dollars keep getting bigger, because we have to decide what is our highest priority to fit into our budget this year. You're welcome.
Is industry considered educational industry or, maybe that's a question for Larry, I don't know.
It is. I just looked at Larry, and he's nodding his head, yes.
Okay.
Okay?
Good, thank you.
Okay, welcome.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Lugan Bell.
With the entrances on safety and security, does that include any major changes, like changing the entrance of Memorial to the back of the school or anything like that?
Some, not all of it. The list of the 5.2, we can get it, we can make sure that you've got it so you can see what it exactly looks like.
If we were to stay with the proposed 7 cents per square foot, are we meeting the basic? Are we doing middle average or do we, what are we getting? What are we getting?
We're getting those things that desperately need to be done, but we're not moving forward. For example, our roofs, in the, when we get a couple more screens down, part of our $24 million projections is about $9 million for roofs for the district. 71% of our roofs are out of warranty right now, and so, that means that we're patching them and doing that bare minimum to keep them from being replaced. But when you have 71% of the building's roofs not, you know, out of warranty, that's just creating, that means we're using those roofs longer than their expected life. And so, I would say we're falling behind at spending 70 cents per square foot on average. We're falling behind on getting those projects done because we have to pick what can we fit into the 1.6 million and kind of what rises to the top.
One more follow-up question. So, this .7 cents is the built-in to 1 million a year?
That's what we currently are budgeting in our operational budget.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so I think we've covered safety and security. We've talked about class sizes, technology costs, facility needs. So, facility needs, this is this list that you guys have seen, and the $19.4 million would be to get everything on the list completed. And this, I would anticipate, would be a one-time cost. We would probably need to build in more than 70%, 70 cents per dollar as a square foot in our upcoming operating budget as we're getting these things done. 1.6 isn't keeping us even, and so, moving forward, I would think we would want to increase that. But by getting these big fixes done, that would definitely help on that list from growing So, the things that we've talked about already for facilities doesn't even talk or cover South Middle School, Roosevelt, and then Prairie Ridge, McKinley, and a potential use of Little Red. That would add a projected $32 to $35 million if we were going to include any of those projects.
Yep. Thanks, huh? Go ahead.
Leaves us with a big question mark of compensation, and how does that fall into the referendum needs? You heard our presentation just before this one, so I think we've kind of talked that one out a lot. So, the next part of my presentation is to give you sample referendum questions. The Budget Development Committee has seen these questions. We've talked about them a lot, and I have three questions to present in front of you guys tonight. The first one that we're presenting is a sample recurring question. And so, this is exactly what the wording would be on the ballot. There's a blank for the dollar amount because I'm not sure what we would want that dollar amount to be, and this would be a recurring. There's two options with the recurring. You can, actually, no, I lied. With the recurring, it would just be a flat dollar amount per year that you're going to exceed revenue limits for, and that would go on forever. We chose the wording of consistent of educational programs, building, maintenance, safety and security improvements, and technology enhancements to cover all of the things that we've been talking about. We could put compensation in there, or compensation could be considered under educational programs. With our messaging, we could clearly define what educational programs would be. Compensation, class sizes, and some of those other things that we've been talking about would kind of fall under there. So, again, there would be, the board would need to make the decision of exactly how do you want that wording to be. This was an example that we've seen other districts use.
Commissioner Lugan Bell. Now, were you able to check in on that legality piece with what we can and cannot put in that question? I know I maybe have seen other districts have used, you know, for educational enhancement and kind of specific, you know-
Yep.
-words like that?
Yep, this actually came from Corals and Brady. They typically are the consultants that work with writing the referendum questions. So, there is some flexibility with that. We can be very vague and just say for educational purposes, or we can be more specific. And so, educational programs is fine. If there's something else you want me to check with and ask them, I can certainly do that. So, the second question is a sample non-recurring question, and this one is specific to a three-year non-recurring, and you can see the three blanks. With the non-recurring, you have two choices. You can go like 3 million this year, 4 million next year, and 5 million the year after, or you can do one flat dollar amount. And so, I wanted to show you those options as part of the non-recurring, that you can tier it, or you can just do one amount. If you did one amount, then it would just say for the 2016-17 school year, for 17-18 school year, and 18-19 school year. And then, again, you can see that the wording at the end is the same as it is on the non-recurring as far as educational programs, building, maintenance, safety and security, and technology enhancements.
Could you go back to the previous slide for a minute, please? The educational programs piece, you know, one of our, you know, original proposals was basically just to cover deficits, right?
Right.
That would basically be that?
Yes.
Educational programs.
Deficits. Deficits would fall under educational programs.
Basically to maintain our programs that we have.
Correct.
Okay, just to be clear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, okay, so, I'm going to put on the optimist hat for a minute. If the state legislature and the governor in the future were to fix the funding formula, which everybody thinks that is broken, and if there was the political will to do that in the future, I assume that that new legislation would somehow account for people's, you know, kind of revenue limit. So, if there was a new formula and we got all sorts of new money, that, you know, that this would be considered somehow, and we wouldn't just be, you know, tacking an additional, you know, 10 million on our budget on this new great, great funding formula in the future.
Right. Yes, and I think you've got a really good point because one of the things that we talked about at Budget Development Committee meeting was by passing the referendum, that gives us the authority to levy up to that amount, but you don't, you know, if you say we need $9 million, but in reality, we need 7.5, we can levy 9 million, but if we're being fiscally responsible, that would be something that we would want to look at, that maybe we don't want to use that whole amount with the referendum.
Beautiful. You anticipated my next question, which is, can we levy less if we were to get this permission and, you know, the legislature gives us more per pupil under the current formula, or we have a new formula? We aren't obligated to tax up to the amount that we would, we, the citizens have given us the permission to tax-
Right, right.
-if things improved.
Yep, and we do need to be careful of that because one of the things that rolls into the revenue limit calculation is that amount that you don't levy, and I'm not sure if that calculation is a little bit different when there is tax. The referendum is different. So, do you want to explain what we can do and not do when we have a referendum and the levy? Okay, so this is Debbie Shufeltowski, and she is from Baird, and we have been working with her for the last week and a half to help us understand some of these things. So, I'm going to have her explain how you don't necessarily always want to under levy because you're actually hurting yourself in the future.
Good evening. So, the question of the under levy, as we call it, levying less than you're authorized to do, regardless of whether you have referendum approval or not, it can affect your revenue limit going forward depending on your position in the formula. So, I know that sounds vague, but I'll elaborate. So, the state says that you can carry over 100% of what you choose not to levy- can carry over 100% of what you choose not to levy, but they'll only let you carry over the ongoing amounts. So, and they assume that if you under levy, you're first under levying the one-time money. So for instance, if you were declining in enrollment and the state gave you one-time money through the formula as they do every year, they would, and you then chose to under levy, they would first assume that you under levied that one-time money so you could carry over the net of what you under levied and what that one-time money was. So each year we go through and the revenue limit helps you calculate it and tells you what that carryover is. So you would have that information before you set the levy as to the impact of it, but it is a consideration whether or not you have referendum authority and then also with the type of referendum you go with. Did I explain that okay?
Yeah, I think so. So if future boards are blessed with a better formula after we pass this great referendum, and we say, oh, boy, our budget is actually, we've got, you know, an extra million dollars coming in that we don't really need, we could take that and, for example, pay for something we didn't think we're going to be able to, like the, you know, if we, the backlog of facilities that we're not quite caught up on. So we could, you know, do those, or we could remodel classroom at the early learning center because we've since run out of space three years down the road. So we could use that money in some way, or we could choose to under levy and then we'll continue to bring taxes down. So that actually is similar to what happened prior to 1993, if anybody's still around that remembers that, when local school boards could actually choose how much we were going to tax our citizens or not. Okay?
Just to clarify that question though, you wouldn't want to under levy more than that one time amount? Because then you'd be under levying in recurring, recurring, not really the right word, future levies, correct? Yes, thank you. So you can't under levy too much?
Because you're hurting yourself in the long run.
Right, right.
Okay. So the next question that I want to share, oh, I'm sorry, are you sure?
Well, I just wanted to remark that the funding formula in and of itself is not equitable, especially where people were plugged in back in 1993, which we've tried to be catching up ever since. So I, I just throw that out there, that there's, right, and she's gone, I can't believe somebody from Baird's agreeing with something I said. So that's really good, thank you.
Yes, because again, to reiterate your point, we were locked in with our spending levels in 1993, and we were fiscally responsible in a low-spending district in 93, and we're still fiscally responsible in a low-spending district based upon Dr. Hardabek's conversations earlier. We're the eighth largest school district, but our spending is number 272 in the state. And so, and again, we're spending below the state average per pupil to the tune of about $350, and when you multiply that by 11,000 students, you get a big number. And so that is again fading into our deficit. If we had those additional funds, that number that we'd be facing would be much smaller. Okay, we're gonna go on to the third question. This is a newer type of question that some districts are utilizing to help them. I know that our board is very strongly wants one question, and so I've kind of titled this the hybrid question. That's not really exactly what it is, but it's a non-recurring question that has a debt component as part of it. So the difference here is that we would say we want to exceed revenue limits by a certain dollar amount for the upcoming number of years. A lot of times, it's 15 years, sometimes it's more. I chose to present 15 years because in 15 years, our debt will be paid off, and our current debt that we have would be paid off in 2030, 31. And so what this question does is it kind of builds in a debt component that would give us the borrowing authority to borrow for some of those bigger projects that we need to do, the facilities maintenance. Instead of trying to say, okay, well, we have money, so we're gonna do these schools because they're a high priority, instead of just being able to use economies of scale and bid all of the roof projects at once. And so we could issue debt for those types of things. And so if you can look at the wording on the bottom of this one, it says for non-recurring purposes consisting of educational programs, building maintenance, debt service, which is different, safety and security improvements, and technology enhancement. We can tweak it a little bit if we choose to and say debt service for safety and security improvements, and debt service for technology enhancement to be more specific. But by having that debt service in there, that will give us the opportunity if we choose to borrow, then we can borrow, and then part of those payments come off of the revenue limit amount. I can show you an example of what that might look like if you want me to.
I think it would be helpful for others. We, we had a really good discussion in budget about this. It basically allows you to borrow initially, so you have this chunk of money to do a bunch of maintenance and things early on, and yet combined with that is still a operating exceed revenue limit piece to it for other programs.
But is that only available in a non-recurring option?
Yeah, but you notice it was 15 years on that. You could do as long as you want, you know, like you would do a normal capital project, you know, you could do, so if you, we'll go back to it, but it would be, you're right, it would be non-recurring, but some examples are 15 or 20 years of that.
Okay, we can do recurring with that.
Oh, we can, okay.
Yep, we didn't provide that option.
Oh, okay, okay.
But Debbie's shaking her head yes that we can do that. That's why she's here tonight is to help us kind of walk through these things because this is a new concept. Okay, so I'm gonna give, this is a sample of what, what one of these questions would look like. And so this is an example, and I don't know if you guys can see that very well.
Can you, can we zoom in on the, yeah?
Oh, yeah, hold on, I have to think about this.
There you go.
Is that better?
Can I click on it with the zoom?
Have to click on it?
There you go.
Okay, there we go, okay. Okay. So this, we'll start here and then I'll, I'll scroll it over, okay? I'm gonna move it down a little bit. Okay, so when we were talking at Budget Development and some of the numbers that we've presented tonight, if you're doing the math, we're close to 39, 40 million dollars. So this operating levy increase is based upon borrowing at 39.15 million over the course of 20 years. So what we would ask our community for is a revenue limit increase of 5.8 million dollars. The net mill rate would mean 95 cent increase to taxes. In the beginning of it, we could use $2,000 where it says non-maintenance debt. That would be the initial $2 million that we talked about additional for maintenance costs, things that we wouldn't want to finance, basically. And so these are just examples just so you guys can kind of get an idea of it. It doesn't have to be used for that, this was just an option. Then the next, the 2.9 million would be based, that would be our loan payment for that time. And then if I scroll over in available funds, you would see that 5.8 would give us available 861,000. Now, if we chose not to put the $2 million into that non-maintenance debt, that number would go to 2.8 million available to use for other things, for our deficit or for other operating costs. The next year, the loan payment would go to 3 million and would give us 859,000 dollars available. And you can see as we move down a few years, there's in the current Fund 38 funds, $250,000. As we have some other of our debt paid off, you know, we have a drop in 2021, then those funds come back and are available to us in our operating budget, so that's the $250,000. And then that increase goes to 1.2 million, and you can see that number on the available funds gets bigger and bigger every year, but we're still using that same number of the 5.8 million, it would be the number that we would want to use in our question. Now, the debt payments, you can see, kind of all stick around $3 million, and that's assuming a 4.5% interest rate. You know, this is a projection because we're not sure when we would actually do this and borrow, so those payments could actually be less, and if that goes less, then our available funds gets to be more.
Do you want to explain what Fund 38 is for everyone?
Sure, Fund 38 is non-referendum debt that we have issued already. And so that's part of the revenue limit formula that's kind of taken off the top.
So again, just make sure I explain this right. It's basically allowing us to borrow to pay for facility needs and so forth, yet have annual operating expenses through the referendum also, kind of combining those.
Yep, yep, it's a combined question. So it would give us the authority if we choose to, to issue debt to get those big projects done. And so that's kind of the idea behind it, so that way then you can, by borrowing, you get that big pot of money and you can get those projects done, and then you're still giving yourself some money towards the operating costs as well.
What is the interest rate? The interest rate?
That would be the interest rate on the debt that we borrow, and that's just a projection.
It's 4.5% on there now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that what you wanted? I'm sorry, Catherine.
Commissioner Johnson?
So with this kind of question, if you can go back to the language?
Sure.
Do we have to ask for a dollar amount so that, I mean, that's the shock value of this sort of question?
You ask for a yearly amount. So in this question, we would ask for 5,860,000 based upon the example I just showed you.
But so where does the amount come in for the borrowing piece of it?
So we could, so we could use that, say 5 million, we'll just say it's 5 million per year. We could use that all for operating expenses each year, or we could use part of it to issue debt and pay debt payments and get a chunk of money that way.
So our 5.8 would include the debt payments, and so we wouldn't be, the question wouldn't say we need X for?
A building project or something, correct. So it, that debt service piece in there where it says debt service allows us to issue debt at some point to do a big project of some kind.
So Debbie, you said we could do this with a recurring, so there's no funding cliff? Would the language change if we did that?
Correct, you would change the language to be, to pair with the recurring language, the ongoing portion, the, the balance of it noting the, what it's for, educational programs, building maintenance, debt service, that portion could stay the same. And just, can I add one?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So one important note about this hybrid is that the board would also, in issuing Fund 38 debt in an amount this large, you would need to also go through petition process. It is paid back under revenue limit dollars, but because it exceeds the $1 million limit that all districts have, a Fund 38 borrowing authority, you would go through the petition process. If you weren't petitioned, you could borrow.
So that's the same, this is basically the same thing we did with the Prairie Ridge building, that if, if people objected to this, they would have to take advantage of that petition process through the, there's some deadlines and yada, yada.
Okay, correct.
Commissioner Dux?
Well, this sounds very tempting, however, you only have 5 million a year to use. So if you had lots, I mean, we have lots of projects that we want to do, and so that means if you do compensation, you're probably gonna use it up pretty fast. If you do safety and security and one other project, you're gonna use it really fast, and you still have to wait to do a lot of that.
What I think she's, they're saying is that the safety and security, the one-time cost, the technology one-time cost, the facilities, 19 million, all of those things we'd be borrowing, and we, our, our loan payment would, would be within that 5.8 or whatever we choose it to be. If we wanted it to be compensation, it might be 7.8 or 8.8, but the, but that loan payment, because we're borrowing over 15 years for those one-time costs upfront, would be built into that total amount.
Is that the description?
Yep, I think you got it.
I don't have it.
Commissioner Dux?
Well, I'm just saying, if you got only 5 million a year, how far is that gonna go? And then the next year, you gotta wait for another 5 million.
And I think that was just a sample amount, not based on what we would need necessarily. Is that correct, Abby? Just kind of what we had for a sample?
Yeah, what I was trying to do was, the numbers that I provided you tonight add up to about 39, 40 million dollars, so just wanted to give you an idea
Okay.
of what that could look like
Okay.
for the question, so?
Spread it out over 15 years and?
Right, it would look a little different if we spread it out over 15 years.
Commissioner Hammack Boyle? I'll give you a chance, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions. Are, are other, are districts doing this?
Yeah, Racine did it.
Okay.
Last spring, if, I do have a sample of their question, if you wanted to see it.
And so when you do something like this, can you give me an idea of what the mill rate would be?
I can give you for the, the 39 that we're talking about right now, the mill rate, the tax impact would be, I'm trying to zoom this in again, and so I apologize that I'm not doing so well with it. Hopefully that's better. So in this particular case, the mill rate, you can see it starts out at 95 cents, and then it kind of decreases as we're going through, even though that, even though the dollar amount is 5.8 million all the way through, the mill rate starts at 95 cents, and it drops down to 78 cents. Now that's in addition to what we're currently levying.
Can I just have a quick follow-up question?
Go ahead.
And this ties into our, our, when our debt goes away, because you're up to the 15 years to that point, right?
Right, so this column that's over here, that's the non-referendum, the current Fund 38, so as we pay down our Fund 38 debt, then that goes back to operating dollars. So you can see that as we pay down our operating debt, it's, we're gaining. So by the time, based upon this example and based on, upon a $39 million borrowing, our 5.8 million gives us $7 million at the end of the 15 years to work with.
Commissioner Johnson, I wasn't sure if you had the follow-up or if you were about to jump in, go ahead.
Well, I just want to make sure Commissioner Dux understands this, because this is, I mean, this is a complex idea here. So, well, I think it's important if you, if we still have questions, certainly people in the public would have questions. So if we're borrowing, so she added up some samples, you know, 20 million dollars for our backlog and facilities, some of them, 5 million for technology, 5 million for safety and security. You say we're borrowing 30 million dollars right now, we're spreading it out over 15 years, and so we can spend it upfront. It's just like taking a loan on, you know, in any other way. You get the money upfront, and then we pay it back over the next 15 years, you know, a couple million dollars at a time. So, so it's, it's, you know, instead of having two questions where we're gonna borrow this chunk and it's either gonna pass or fail, we're, we're incorporating their loan payment into our total budget, which is what we do at home, if that makes sense. So I wanted to comment on Commissioner Hammack Boyle, she anticipated another one of my questions, which is how does that affect people's tax rates? And I think that's, that piece is probably more important than any other piece of, of what we do. And we decreased the tax rate this year because of the formula that we're under, and it went from, you know, nine something to nine something, is that right? Around $10 to about nine and a half dollars?
Yeah, you're pretty close. It was 985 a year ago, and this year it was 945 or 940. So it's like about 45 cents.
So it went down 40 cents per thousand, and now we're proposing at the worst year next year, it's gonna go up 95 cents per thousand. So basically, you know, you're making up that difference and then, and then that much more. But in communities around us, like Eltuna, they're taxing already at a much higher rate, and we're taxing at a lower rate than our parents paid back in the 70s and 80s and 90s, when revenue limits were first imposed. And so while nobody likes to raise their taxes, we are paying less than our parents were paying on the same houses, and we are paying less than some of our neighboring districts already.
Just realize this does not include the compensation dollars that we've talked about. This is just these pieces here that we've talked about so far.
Correct.
Did you have a question, Commissioner? Okay, so, so we really need a good discussion to give me and agenda setting and the superintendent, how we want to move forward. I agree totally with the superintendent that the elephant in the room is the compensation piece. So I need a really good discussion about what you want to see next time. We had talked about an agenda setting of framing the questions before the board, if you still want them, about one to you would be about when it should be. The other would be which type of, you know, should we give multiples of these or not? And I thought we had one other, I can't remember if there's a third on these, but those are two big questions right there. And, oh, and the amount, of course, that would be in it. And because of that compensation piece, it is really hard for me to know and for the superintendent administration to know what should be put in as amount. We have these very much, we have compensation piece that's left open. We have these very much, we have compensation piece that's left open. So we really need some guidance on, on how the board members feel about this. Certainly, you know, we could put something together, I don't, but, and put it up for discussion next time as a resolution. But I really, really would like more guidance on how you want to do this. I, I have some, some my opinions on it, and, but I, we really need to hear from you on these questions. So both these type of questions, I would, these type of referendum questions, I would love your comments about that, how you feel about these, but also the amounts and what should go in it. Commissioner Hammack Boyle.
What about the when?
And the when, yes, that is fine too.
So I, I wanted to comment on that. Are, are we able, have we surveyed our staff? And would that be a possibility to get input?
Yes.
But not before January 4th, I don't believe.
Okay. But they could, they could let us know. Really, I don't know. Maybe there is a way, I don't know.
Commissioner Johnson.
On the how much, the when, the what, what?
Well, for me, oh, should I go?
Yes, go ahead.
I forget. I think we, we started out by wondering, not wondering, but the compensation piece as being part of the transparency for the referendum. And my take on that is that we would not have the compensation piece completed for an April referendum. I'm just going to throw that out there. And if not, what, how is that, you know, if that, that would be the route we'd go, how would our staff feel about that? Because then it would take longer to figure out the compensation piece, and it would probably move us into having the referendum in November. Which, there's pros and cons to that, and I think maybe we need to really think all the pros and all the cons and get input, so.
I'm happy to have that discussion now about pros and cons. Commissioner Jean.
I'm going to echo that as far as realistically, if we're, if it's going to take another few months to just get that compensation piece done, and if we want that in there, which I, I do, if we want that in there, then realistically, we need to start looking at a different date.
Commissioner Luganbill.
You know, it's really important for us to tap into the passion and the voice of the community and our staff. And when I hear from people what they're passionate about with the referendum, I hear a lot about people and programs. And that's mostly what people are interested in. And that really speaks to what we've talked about at the board level and what we've heard in the community about thriving and about these structural reforms, which would truly transform the district. So I don't know if, I don't think we're ready for that by April. We won't be. I, I, I wish we were, but due to a number of factors, we're not. And obviously circumstances have changed, things have evolved. There are different people sitting at this table than were when the conversation started. But I don't think we're ready now for April.
Commissioner Dux.
Well, I'd love to do it in April, but I don't see it's possible physically to get around and talk to many, many groups and make the case. We haven't settled on a number. And I just feel like it would be wiser to wait until November so we can really mount a good campaign. We don't want this to fail. We want to make sure people understand it. So I'm, I would go with November. We should be somewhere else right now if we were ready to go in April, and we're not.
Commissioner Jean.
And I would like to add that there's been multiple community members that have expressed that they know nothing about the referendum at this time, and if we're going to be doing it in April, it's going to be a very hard sell. There's many people that have already told me that. And if we're going to wait a few months before we can even mount a viable question, I think we're going to be doing ourselves a disservice by trying to rush this process.
I have a question, is it okay? I have a question to follow up, might be more for you, Abby. My, my biggest concern has always been, well, besides the possible legislation in the legislature about delaying it, has been going into debt, you know, a deficit for another year. And given that we may hopefully finish this compensation plan, you know, to start that fall, I really feel like, I would like some funding to fund that. Is, can we come up with a reasonable plan without a referendum this April to do that to some extent? And I, I'm kind of asking, I'm asking a hard question on the spot here, I know. Is it basically the answer that we would just have to go into working capital more? Or is there something else we, we can do? Because I don't want to finish that plan and then say, sorry, we don't have money this year. We did all this work, we'll try and get it for you next year. That, that's kind of my, my biggest concern. Otherwise, you know, I think November's a good date, otherwise politically. So I, I don't know if you can answer that, or if I've just basically answered it myself, or what?
Yeah, I can, I can tell you what I know at this point in time, and we are working on. We're looking at those areas that we're consistently coming in under budget and trying to define, is there a reason why we're consistently coming in under budget in those areas? Because if, if that's a consistent pattern, then our expectations when we're building our budget are different than what's actually happening. And so trying to look at that over the last three years to figure out, is there a pattern? And then have those discussions internally to find out, you know, why are, why are projections significantly different than our budget? Because if that's a consistent pattern, then I think we would have some funds already in our current projected deficit that are maybe earmarked for contracted services or some other type of expense that we would have available to put into the compensation model. So I can't answer your question with the definitive answer right now, but I think it's something that we definitely need to look at, and we've started looking at. So I agree with you absolutely, because we want to roll out this plan, we want to make everybody feel really good about it. But how do we fund that when we delay a referendum? And I think that because we've consistently not gone into working capital as much as we thought we were going to, that I think we would have some flexibility that if we don't go in April and need, you know, obviously then it wouldn't impact the 16, 17 school year. And so then, how is that going to affect going forward, like the borrowing you mentioned, Chris, and things like that? I, I don't know for sure, because I don't have that magic number of what it's going to be. But if we talked about one more year of going into working capital to be able to make sure that our numbers are really good and we're really confident with our new compensation plan and everybody is supporting of that, I think we're going to be doing ourselves a really big service by taking that additional time and solidifying those numbers, solidifying that compensation plan. Because it's going to be much easier to have our staff and our community support it when they feel like we've gone through everything that we've gone through. And frankly, for compensation, as you guys have heard tonight, we're not, we're not there yet. And we want to make sure that that plan is supported by our staff, because our staff is communicating with our, with their neighbors and taxpayers. And if they're not happy with it, their neighbors aren't going to be happy with it. And so it's important to make sure that our staff supports that. Something else that I'm not sure if the board is aware of, but other boards, I've talked to other business managers, they actually will hire a company that will do a community survey. And that community survey will look at what will your community support? And that has been very successful in other districts' referendums, because they know before the question's even drafted, like, here is what our community will support. It can be types, it can be amounts. I mean, I think the sky's the limit when you think about it. And I do know, in talking to La Crosse, I know they've used it, I believe Hudson used it as well. So some of those other big districts that we talk about, it's an investment, but it might be worth it in the long run. And I don't know if that's been talked about or not, because, you know, I'm new to the scene here. But just another idea that when Chris was talking about surveying our staff, you know, what about our community?
What, what is our working capital just at the end of this past year?
Oh, off the top of my head, I think it's about 25 million.
Yeah. All right, who is next?
I, I would like to comment and add to what Abby talked about and, you know, what Chris and Chu have asked about. You know, I think one of the advantages in taking a little bit more time to get this compensation work done is that you can, we've identified our needs if we want to go forward and really thrive as a school district, kind of take it to the next step, and you've seen what those costs will be. Once you've got that compensation piece out, you can then kind of talk with the community, educate them to our needs, understand what their priorities are, either through surveying the community or surveying the staff. And then you could, you really can refine and develop your question. Because I think at the end of the day, when you begin to educate the community, they want to know, what number are you going out for? What will that number support? In other words, what will that number get the district that it doesn't have now? What's the question that they're being asked? And what is their impact to their taxes? And until we have that, you know, information really solidified, I think it makes it very difficult to go out and, you know, gain the support of the community.
Thank you. Who's next? Commissioner Johnson.
Well, the timing for this was last year, frankly, because we are already dipping into working capital way too much. So whether you're talking November 15 or April of 16, it's kind of a horse apiece. You're not going to be spending the money until 17, 18. If we went this April, we'd be looking at 16, 17. So by delaying six months, you're, you're not funding for a whole nother year. So I think that needs to be clarified. And then as far as bringing it to the community, yes, obviously they need all of that information. But if we, once we vote on a question, that's only, that's when the number's going to be solid. And not until we say, yep, that's the question we're going to approve. And when you do that, according to the timelines I've seen, approximately three months before the election, that's when you bring it to the community, and I think I've said this in other venues, but the community isn't going to, isn't going to pay attention now for the next year and a half. They're just going to be like, oh, they're not going to talk about it. And then they're going to stop paying attention until we come back and vote on a question three months before the election. So whenever we just, whenever we made our statutory guidelines to bring a question, that three months will be enough to explain it to the community. If you, now hopefully nobody who doesn't care about education is watching this, this broadcast anymore. But the naysayers are, I mean, there's a certain group of people that will vote no no matter what. And there's a certain group of people that'll vote yes no matter what. And so we're not talking about them, because they're not the ones that need to be educated, it's the, the people in the middle. And if you spend six months telling them, we're going to spend X dollars, then the naysayers are going to try to convince people not to do it. But until we go, you know, to educate the community with that specific number, I guess you don't want to give your naysayers a head start by telling them six months ahead of time what you're going to do when you only need three months to do it, to really educate people. People have a short attention span, they know we have a funding problem, and they just want to know how it's going to affect my taxes. And we, you know, whatever your question is, Abby's going to, you know, put it into a little calculator, and she's going to tell you, 95 cents a thousand. So I, I don't think we should be too concerned about if we were to vote on something. It sounds like most people aren't willing to do that, but you don't want to do it six months ahead of time. You want to do it under the, the timeline. So if you're going April of 17, then next January, you're, those of you who are going to be back, you're going to be sitting here having the same conversation, let's nail down this number. So, and then as far as the community survey, I know somebody had been around the last time, it was 2007? Didn't we do a community survey, and it still failed? So, you know?
Then we didn't, we agreed not to do one in 2009.
And the Capitol referendum passed.
Yeah, it did.
So I'm not sure that it's necessary to ask the, the community how much they're willing to spend. We need to tell them, in order to continue operating our public schools, this is the money we need. And if we're going to pay our people what they're worth, this is the money we need, and this is affecting your taxes. And can you find that 95 cents per thousand in your budget in order to have strong schools in our community?
Commissioner Vu.
Well, the question is when and the amount. When the referendum to be pushed and the amount to be included in the referendum. I take a look at the, the when, either April of 2016, or the next date would be November 2016. For the reason of us being more parents, I push for November. And then for the amount, I believe that we need to come to a amount. The amount that is more attractive to me would be an amount that include all what we talked about earlier, plus the two initiative, compensation and strategic planned priority. So we have two options. We can go ahead with the hybrid amount, the hybrid idea. And the reason I would say go for the hybrid idea would be like what Dan would say. In this community, we can choose to ask for a lot of money and a few people pay for it in a short time. Or you can ask for a lot of money and pass the burden to the future people to help pay for. So 15 years, it gives that opportunity for the people in this community to help pay for the cost of good education. So A, I, I like the idea that we push for November. And the reason we push for November is so that we are more concrete about the exact amount, which included two new priority that we did not talk about, the elephant and the strategic priority. And we have to use November date, whether we like it or not. By that time, if you don't have the two information, then the administration just need to estimate a budget. A budget that we will live with for the next 15 years. We live with this budget for the past 23 years. Nothing wrong with living with a budget for the next 15 years. So we have to be realistic about that budget, yes, if we don't know the exact amount for the elephant. So I moved that, I suggest that we stay with the November date, but also move on with the hybrid option.
Thank you. Commissioner Jean.
I too like the hybrid option because of the simple fact that we're not going to be asking two questions. And that, that if we are going to ask the two questions, we know that would not end up very well. So I like the fact that it's one question that is going to take care of both our bricks and mortars and our people. I think if we, if we don't move the date, like Charles is saying, I think we will be shooting ourselves in the foot.
One more thing.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I looked at this sheet that we were giving earlier about history of referendum, pass and fail. November or April, the percentage is very similar. Pass or fail, very similar. Not significantly different.
Interesting. Commissioner Dux.
I feel very strongly that we have to get that number for compensation. And I think if we wait a little bit longer and do November, we're going to be more accurate. We're going to be willing to stick our necks out a little bit more for our employees. I feel very strongly about that.
Could I, and then we can continue the discussion, I think we're getting close to done here. I would like to give the public a chance to speak on a public forum. I think one of the public want to speak on this. Mark, go ahead. Is that on, Mark? Is it on?
Mark Going, E17450, County Road, V Augusta. When you come back for the January 4th meeting, one of the things I think the community is looking for is clarity. Plan that into your January 4th meeting. You know, what, rather than, it sounds like it might be November, but that's not definite. And so if it's a matter of we're going to monitor things for the next six months and then see, that's concerning. That's also, that's not also, that's also not honoring what the community has been asking. Yes, it sounds like there's several things that need to be decided. But on January 4th, look at the clarity. You could, people have talked around the type of referendum. Perhaps January 4th, we can say it would be this type. Perhaps January 4th, we can say it would be this type. Perhaps we could say it would be this date. We may not know the dollar amount, but we likely could be clear on the types of things that would be in it. Because the communication that happens on that January 4th meeting is going to be very important. Yes, there's a lot of things that need to be decided, but part of that clarity is the, what we're working toward. It also can include the timeline of what needs to happen between now and that point. So, thank you.
Excellent points, thank you. Commissioner Jean. Oh, I'm sorry, was there any other, anyone else from the public? Commissioner Jean.
Okay, in committee, I did not think that this can be reoccurring. So can I get some, what would the difference be if it's reoccurring versus non-reoccurring?
Go ahead, Abby.
I'm going to tackle it, but if I get it wrong, Debbie's here and shall explain. Okay. So the difference would be that we would still have a flat dollar amount, so that dollar amount would not change. We would take out, well, we would leave in the 16, 17 school year and then I think we would take out the part that would say, and for each of the succeeding 14 school years thereafter, because it would just say probably thereafter, because we wouldn't be limiting ourselves. Debbie had mentioned that the question is very similar to this question. So the differences between the two, you can see how this one says the 16, 17 school year and thereafter, and then it says for recurring purposes. So I think that's the main part that would be different, is that it would, the part that says for each of the succeeding 14 school years, that would come out. And then the non-recurring would say recurring purposes. And then I think the wording would be the same as far as consistent, consisting of educational programs, building, maintenance, debt service. So I think those would be the two major differences. Does that sound right? Thank you. She's nodding at me that we got it. Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't know who's next. Commissioner Lugabell, go ahead.
I'm just curious when the compensation committees are going to be meeting next?
We're going to start again in January after the holidays.
Mid-January?
That depends on Bob's schedule.
I think Commissioner Johnson was next, go ahead.
Yeah, well, it sounds like the clarity is already here, that there, there's a consensus that, that because of the missing compensation piece, that this, that the board isn't ready to go this April. And that's really all the clarity there can be because we would have to vote on a question next time. Or maybe we'd have one thereafter.
Well, it appeared, I mean, we could just have a resolution voting to have a referendum in November without the question. I believe we could do that. Or the type of referendum, I don't, I don't know.
So the question would have to be finalized in January to go in April. And if the question isn't going to be brought to us in January, there isn't going to be an April referendum. And I don't think beyond that, that this board, any sort of vote they would take could be binding anyway, because until you vote for an actual question, there is no actual question. So this board could say, yep, we're going in November 16 and yep, we're going to go to include these things and we want recurring versus non-recurring. And all of that is basically a moot point, because until you have the actual question voted on, the board can change its mind. And there will be two different people sitting here as well. So, you know, I had this, this same conversation with OPED. We can make all the promises that, that you want us to make to make you feel better, but it's meaningless until we have an actual vote on, on, on an action, because there'll be seven people sitting here, at least two of them will be different when that question is voted on, if it's not voted on this January. So it doesn't really matter if we say November recurring, non-recurring, the, the dollar amount.
Understood, that makes sense. You forgot it? I knew you had your line up. Okay. So to summarize what I've heard, it's most board members are, are thinking November. I assume primarily because of the compensation piece, if I understand that right. The one question that I haven't asked, and I think I know the answer, but I feel I have to ask, would any board members be interested in going to referendum without the compensation piece in April? It's no, but I wanted to check on that.
You're saying in a situation?
Where, where you could include these other pieces without the compensation.
And then go to referendum again in November for compensation?
Well, that, that would be a future board to decide, right? I assume the answer is no, but that was another option that I wanted to bring up. Because that, that's really our sticking piece, right? Right? Commissioner Jean.
No.
I thought that would be the answer.
My answer is very similar too. It's no, because right off the bat, one of the priority for this strategic plan is quality of, of education, which include staff. And then the next would be academic. I don't think we can afford not to look at compensation and be able to achieve those two priority. So we want to be able to make it right. And then I'm just going to take a bold stab at it. I believe we are looking at 60 to 70 million. We should be able to use that number and begin to craft the questions, beginning January 2016, and be able to finalize that number by six months before, three to six months before the election date, which is November.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson.
Well, whatever number you all decide next fall, I want to thank Chippewa Falls for putting out a really, really bigger number. So it just reinforces the fact that we are, you know, doing advanced planning and, and being fiscally responsible, et cetera. But as far as the, the suggestion we had quite earlier tonight about the consultant, if the consultant is slowing the committees down, then I would support having meetings without the consultant. I know that when we did the handbook committee and we had a deadline and it was kind of a similar deadline, instead of meeting once a month, we met twice a month and we kind of scrapped the use of the consultant during that process as well, because it, you know, kind of got the, you set the stage and got everybody moving. And, and if, if that's the holdup, then, you know, just use the skill we have within, within our district and, and continue to do the work without the consultant.
Commissioner Handbook, go ahead.
That was my, that was what I was going to say, when, I, I really think that should be the case too, because I think we could get down the road faster having conversations between and calling Bob in when we needed him. I think the past year, we've learned a lot about what all those numbers mean and what the study means. So I think we bring a better level of knowledge to that conversation. And so thank you, Wendy Sue, for helping me remember what I wanted to say.
Commissioner Jean.
Yeah, I too would support that. So if, if you need, I guess, the majority of the board to, to okay it before you move on, I think we will support you just moving on as far as meeting with these individuals, committees, groups without the consultant. Of course, I would like you to call him if possible.
Go ahead, Superintendent.
Okay, could you talk a little bit about what some of the implications might be for not working with the consultant or taking this on on our own?
I think that when it comes to the non-salary schedule items that we talked about during the presentation, you know, when we talk about flexibility of, of different leaves and vacation days and dual certification, you know, all those things. I think that we're okay to have those conversations within the group to be able to generate some, some suggestions and some potential moving forward options to then share with Bob. I think that what we don't want to do is when it comes to creating the salary schedules and the increments and the percentages, I don't think that's something that the group wants to take on without Bob's consultation, because he's the expert in that area. And he can see, as we've learned through this process, kind of a domino effect of things. You know, we might be going down this way and then he'll be like, oh, but don't forget about X, Y, and Z, because if you do that, then this is somehow going to hamper you down the road. And we wouldn't want that to happen. But I think that those other conversations that are not specifically on the salary schedule, I think we could have all those conversations with the representatives on the groups and be able to take recommendations back to Bob for consideration. But it would be that other component that I'd be hesitant about.
Commissioner Dux.
Well, I just wondered, Charles talked about a bigger number and I was just wondering if we, if we could do a bigger number for the hybrid.
Yeah, I mean, we can use whatever number you want and then we can project, you know, do you want 15 years? Do you want 20 years? I mean, I think there's lots of options. The one that I presented was just one. And so with some guidance, we definitely could do that, because then I can have with Baird's assistant, get what would the mill rate be? You know, if we look at a $50 million borrowing over 20 years, you know what I mean? I think that the sky's the limit on options. But again, until we, until I know that number, I can't really tell you how that would affect mill rates. And, you know, and then even if we had one number, let's say 60 or 70 million, you could look at, what does it look, look like for 15 years? What does it look like for 20 years? Just to give you some variances. You're welcome.
Okay. It's getting late. This has been a great conversation. Help for me, Commissioner Lugabell.
Just want to add, I think as a board, next month, whatever we end up deciding, we need to be very intentional about how we communicate this with all staff and probably parents in a communication, just as a bit of an update on our work. Because I, I think, one way or other, one way or another, you know, people are, I think a lot of staff are very interested in an April referendum. And, I mean, there are, then there are some that, you know, didn't know the, didn't know the specifics yet, so they weren't going to get on board. So it's just important that with each of these different groups, we're very intentional about how we communicate with them. And maybe as a board, we should draft a letter that we send to staff, email, you know, just updating them and letting them know kind of where we're at. But we really need to set the tone that we're going to be on the same page with all of this. We're not going to be in our silos, whether that's committees or staff groups or different levels of the chain, so.
With that in mind, I was going to summarize it. So now, I'm not, I figure we're not going to bring a resolution to the board next time based on this discussion. But here's what I would like, and I appreciated Mr. Goings' comments about clarity and, and some expectations. And I'm wondering, can we get some kind of timeline of when we think we can do this that we could have next time to discuss, to give some of that clarity, when we'll be ready with numbers? I, I know, maybe push Bob a little more on some of this. I think that would be really, really helpful on the major milestones of when we get done, including communicating about it, if we could do that. The second piece in terms of the clarity is I'm wondering if, being on budget myself, if the budget committee could soon start working on next year's budget and figuring out how we could free up funds to help fund the compensation plan that would start next fall. I think we need to have that discussion and help figure some of that out now. And now's the time to start, I mean, before everything comes in from the buildings in, you know, April and so forth, start thinking about that. So I would hope that we as a budget committee could start doing that too, to start providing some expectations of what will happen with that. Does that sound reasonable? Those two things I think would be important for us to have rather soon.
That means, that means we're going to need to meet and hash this out. I need a calendar.
Yeah, and I'm not talking before the 4th January. We don't have to meet as a budget before then, but a ti, some kind of timeline by the 4th would be helpful. But yes, we need to, yeah, we need to start meeting. Other suggestions on those lines of, you know, making this a little more, hmm, how should I say, planned or expectations known? Any further comments? Superintendent, do we need to help you anymore with any of this?
No, you've, you've been clear.
Okay, okay. All right. Good discussion, thank you, everybody. Again, I, I have to say, when we first started this, the compensation piece, I was always thinking we'd get done a lot sooner, and that's just how it is.
Very hopeful.
Okay, let's go to the Charter School annual reports.
Good evening, thanks for having me here. I've been asked to give a report on McKinley Charter School and any updates we have on site. I think I present it to everyone that's here, so it's not going to be too new information, a lot lighter than maybe the last two agenda items. My name's Pete Riley, I don't know if I said that. I've been at McKinley for about 17 years. We're up at 1266 McKinley Road. I took so many notes during the last two conversations, I've hopefully can move this forward. So, you know, no components have changed at McKinley. We have really four components that are governed by McKinley onsite. And again, I'll just invite all of you to come up and have another conversation, so we can get into questions after I'm done. But if you want to have a much longer conversation, we can do that at your convenience. Onsite, there's a credit component and a competency component. The building's really split into two halves, and if you ask the staff, it's really two-thirds, one-third, but it's separated by the office. I also run some staff at the Eau Claire County Jail and the Northwest Regional Detention Center. So onsite, again, we have a credit component. We have, students have the opportunity to earn a credit diploma. Students are referred from their middle school and high school. They're, again, earning high school credits to earn a 22 credit diploma this year, 23 and a half next year. Since last year, we served 32 students at the credit component. We really consider space for about 24 at a time. Students attend classes during the academic school year only. We do not have summer component, not formal summer component. And we've had 59 students graduate from the credit component since we opened in 1996.
Pete, do you ever send kids back?
Very rarely do we have kids transition back. What we do though, is have students take a class or two at the high school and then come back. And, I mean, I've been there 17 years, I've probably seen four successfully transfer right back to the high school and graduate with a North Memorial diploma. I could say 80% of the students that come into the credit component may end up in the competency component when they're 17, which is this component here.
Because they're already so behind when you get them.
Yeah, unengaged, maybe a better word.
Have you seen a decrease in the demand for the credit? I mean, there's always more kids than you've got space, or have you seen, you know, with increased mental health services and more, you know, positive behavior reinforcement and RTI in the schools that they're catching more kids before they get to the point where you need, they need to go to you?
I think I've probably seen an increase in the demand for some different programming in the district, not maybe just McKinley credit component, but definitely something different than a bigger building. So a reminder, in the competency component, we serve kids that are 17 to 21 years old. Last year, we served 162 kids in the, in the competency component again onsite. They're served year round. We do run summer school. 72 students graduated last year and we've had 1,576 graduates since 1996. We do have this dream of having a McKinley reunion this, at the end of the summer. So I just put that out there. I don't know if I should.
Will you invite us?
Yeah. I have a staff member that goes down to the Eau Claire County Jail four days a week. She basically will get a jail roster and call anyone under the age of 21 out and ask them if they have a high school diploma. And if they do not, we'll talk what kind of educational options they have. And we do have summer school in the county jail also. Good relationship with the Department of Human Services and the county jail staff to alleviate those kids and keep them going from being maybe in a cell to have an educational piece around them.
That's Huber law, right?
No, Huber is you come out of jail to go to school. We actually go into jail and serve kids.
Can I ask, are staff paid the same in the summer as they are during the school year?
In there, yeah.
Okay.
And then we have the Northwest Regional Detention Center. I have two teachers and a, a support staff in there. I have two teachers and a support staff in there, full-time teachers. We serve about twenty-three counties around the Northwest region of Wisconsin. So counties send children to go to the Northwest Regional Detention Center to serve terms, I guess, sentences. Two years prior, the average stay was about three to six days. Then they passed a law that counties could sentence students to up to a hundred and eighty days in that program, which changed the educational programming dramatically over the last two years because now instead of just a three to six day kind of window when they're in the school, you really have to think about planning for the whole school year, half a school year, which tends to turn into a whole school year. And that's going to be ages thirteen to seventeen. We served two hundred and sixty-nine kids last year. In the one-eighty program, what's called the one-eighty program, that long-term program, we probably served a total of twelve, twelve kids last year and helped at least four of them graduate. I don't have the exact number. Questions on the detention center?
So these kids come from all different school districts?
Yeah.
And then do we get to count them?
We do file a state claim, which includes a detention and jail piece on that claim, which we get the amount back for the educational services that we provide, which would be materials and staffing. The council a little tricky because it falls around dates and Sandy's too busy to come up and tell us how we count in the detention and jail, but I can get better numbers. Okay. If they are Eau Claire students in the detention and jail, I mean, they're counted as Eau Claire student. And just the community partnerships that I'm sure you're aware of that, you know, not just McKinley, but the whole district partners with these. And, and we just, we hold them all in high standing and we, we have to work. They work with a lot of our families. I guess just to end, one of the other things that I put into place with some staff this year, the credit component, is to do, we've had two of them this year and they're just called Coffee Talks, but it's just inviting parents and parents only and to talk to each other about how parenthood has affected their lives. Because it's affected a lot of my kids and the families at school differently than like when I grew up and things like that. So that's just something I'm proud of, to get out there.
Rich?
Okay, have you thought about approaching the Hmong Association or the, the Latino community that is booming in this area? I believe they have a council building right, right now as we speak, so.
The Latino community?
Yes.
El Centro, yeah.
Yes.
You know, it hasn't, like, I haven't reached out specifically, but definitely an idea for sure. I can do that.
Yes, I would love that because I know you've had at least one Hmong person in your, that they used your service before.
Oh, yep, several, several currently.
Oh, I have a question. Is someone else asking a question? No, sorry, go ahead. About your space. So on a given day, can you illustrate for us what that looks like? About how many kids you have in a given day?
Sure, and thanks for bringing me down that road. Because actually McKinley's been in the conversation maybe in the last two months, just to talk about the space out there. And it has, you know, I, I've had conversations with staff through the Building Improvement Committee about what, what's good, what's, what needs to be improved at McKinley. And I think I somewhat, being there seventeen years, take the blame for having the attitude of, we can just make do. We can make do out there, make do. And after twelve years of making do, they're kind of saying, okay, now we're still asking you for a little more breathing room here to better serve the students. The competency component is a kind of the back room and that's why I invite you out to look at it. It can fit about eighteen kids. We have about a hundred and thirty enrolled, but it's a drop-in program, so obviously they're not all there. And then the other side of building, the credit side is, it's, it's fairly spacious compared to the, the one room. But space is needed to help kids stay at school, engage, and work on a lot of life issues at the same time as the academic piece. So like I said, in the last couple of months, weeks, six weeks, I've talked to District Administration. I've talked to some community partners about how could, and even just how could we relook at space at McKinley? But then also move around the community a little bit. So thanks for bringing that up.
All right, I think that's it. Great, thank you. Thanks, Pete.
All right, you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, first, I think I need to tell the school board members, thank you. And you're here till ten o'clock, you've been working hard and your time is much appreciated. And wow, I have a headache just from listening to the conversation and trying to soak in everything that was presented. And I also realized I work with some very smart people, so very impressive. Well, last week, I was asked to present to the school board tonight. And some of the staff found out about it and they came up to me, it was like within thirty minutes. I think my secretary overheard the conversation and they're like, hey, can we present along with you? And I'm like, what? Seriously? You guys want to present with me? They're like, yeah, we, we want to tell the school board about, you know, the film festival and the STEM project we're working on. I'm like, wow, that's really great. So that made me feel really good. Though I had to tell them, please wait, because they, they really, they're great at storytelling and they tell long stories. So I'm glad I told them to wait, especially considering the time. But to me, that speaks volumes about our school, about the school board, about our governance board. By the way, my governance board president, Liz, and her husband are here. They're always there by my side, supporting what the school is doing, giving the school countless number of hours, along with all of our parent volunteers, all of our other governance board members, the staff. But that speaks volumes of where the school is at, where the school district is at. And I know the conversation is about compensation and we need to compensate our good workers because I'm scared to death I'm going to lose some of my really great teachers. Because I know they've already been approached by charter schools down the road, by other Montessori schools, especially when they go and present at conferences. So with that, I just want to thank everyone. And it, it truly, that's what makes great schools is great people. What our focus has been on, has been on how can we combine, how can we integrate everything we're doing into a, not a tight system, but a system where we're all working towards the same goal. Where we're working together and we know what we're doing and everything starts to pull together. And the governance board, and we decided to start with, the governance board decided to start with our mission and vision because that's, those are our guiding documents. And so during the summer, again, those countless hours they put in, and it, it wasn't like, oh yeah, these are great, let's run with it. I think we spent easily, you know, ten hours hammering these out and really looking at who we are. And then the governance board put it forward to the staff and the staff voted them in this fall. And these are our guiding statements. But we also know that we want to know who we are in the building. What's our foundations and what are our methods? Not so much, we always, what we kept getting hung up on is what makes us unique. And we had to get off that because there are some unique things, but there are also some things that you just find in other schools, such as collaboration. You know, other schools collaborate, we collaborate. We collaborate tremendous amount. But some of the unique things that you'll find is like our multi-age classrooms. Those are very unique. And when you put all this together, this is who we are. And in the past, we've had conversations about you just need to have this identity in your school. And that is true. And this is what we can come back to now. And this is hot off the press. We just hammered this out and voted this in just last month. And as you can see, the whole child's in the middle, along the same discussions that the school board has, but looking at that whole child and everything, everything we can do for the kiddos at our school. Some of the things that's new to our school, some of the things that we're excited about. One of the things that we're really jazzed up about is STEM. STEM is really the hot topic in Montessori conversation right now. How can we integrate science, technology, engineering, and math? And this is what happens when you go to a, we went to the Innovative Conference down in Wisconsin Dells and some of our teachers brought back they, what they thought would be a great way to integrate STEM into our school. And that's through Project Lead the Way. We don't just jump into things, we think things through. And so we decided, well, let's go get three teachers trained that could be trainers and let's try it as a pilot project in three of our classrooms. And we started that this fall. Lots of things we have to work through, but what we're finding out is this, this fits our school very well. We're not, we haven't worked out all the kinks and everything because when you have multi-age classrooms, a lot of times we have to be adjusting the lessons to fit, you know, the multi, the different grades we have in those classrooms. But some of the ways it fits Montessori, it's hands-on, it's collaborative, it's engaging. The lessons fit are a spiraling curriculum. That's a big, that's a, that's one of our methods that's in our, that we believe in at, at Montessori. Students can, it can be brought down to the individualized level. It can also be tailored to meet, you know, the unique interests of the kiddos, not just as a classroom in the whole, but for that individual student. They can take it and run with it. And also the lessons are very, very, you know, the kid can go as deep as they want with the, with what they're learning and what they're thinking. And it's really taken off. When you see these kids in action, it is something to see. And sometimes just the picture itself, and that stethoscope is actually in his heart. I just, I don't know what, his other hand is in his back pocket. But it's a, it, it's sparking the interest in those classrooms and that really develops the love of learning as the kids grow on. Of course, something that's really close to the heart at our school is our garden. We have a lot of pride in our garden. We have a lot of community connections in the garden. The community watches out for our garden during the summer, watching for vandalism and things like that. I get a call every once in a while when something, when a kid, neighborhood kid jumps over the fence, I get called and we go down there and check it out. And our neighbors are great. But this year, we, we took it a step further. We decided to have a big celebration at the end to really celebrate the food that we raised and how we can use it. And so what we did was, we contacted Foster Cheese House and asked if they could bring their fire truck up and if by chance they could make pizzas. And they're like, sure, we can do that. And lo and behold, we used our garden products or produce and we made pizza sauce and we had pizzas. And as you can see, the kids are out there having a great time. But more than just having a good time is that they brought in and used their mathematical skills, their science knowledge to help grow this garden. And that's something that's, you know, when kids can see that at the end, and here's our products, when we put all our knowledge together and people are coming together and parents are there and the community is there. Community wasn't there eating, but they were helping out, that the kids get really excited about this and all of a sudden relevancy comes in. This is why it's great to be learning what we're learning. One of our other exciting things we feel like we're doing is we've changed the way we approach our IMC, the instructional part of our IMC. We kept looking at the approach and it was always like, let's pull the kids out and they get taught a lesson in the IMC. And the connection wasn't being made with what's happening in the classroom. So we put our heads together, along with our librarian, librarians, and said, how can we make this better? And it's like, well, why does, why do we have to send the kids to the library? And instead now, we, we always plan this out a month ahead of time, but a lot of times librarians are going to the classroom, the classroom is going to the library. But it's about using the tools in the IMC, using the expertise of those librarians and making it a, everything connected and making it relevant and making it engaging. So an example of this is that I recently saw was our fifth graders, our E2 classrooms, they were working on graphic novels. So the librarians brought in graphic novels, they presented it to the kids. They got to see what they were, what graphic novels are all about. They got to go in small groups to the IMC where the librarian worked with them on how to use a specific app to make the bubble that the, when the person is speaking in the, you know, in the graphic novel and it, and along with what the teacher was teaching them in language arts, it all started to come together. So it's a very rich environment when we approach things in this manner. And I'm hearing great things from the staff, the kids, the librarians. They love this approach. We also have, we also, we didn't do a remodel of our IMC, but we added things to it like this great mural. All of a sudden, you walk into the library and it's like, oh, this is a nice peaceful feeling. It's a, and you can see that from the picture, this is taken from the Rod and Gun Park. But we had a local artist come in and he painted it over the summer and we couldn't do this without the help of the friends of the library who helped. You know, they, they helped, gave us a monetary donation so we could have the mural painted. And it just made a difference in the library. We also reconfigured it with the existing furniture that we have. Now this is what we get excited about, the film festival. This has really taken off. This is something that, all sorts of things are taking place, but what we get excited about is we have seen some of our most reluctant learners really take off and learn with this approach. Not only our reluctant learners, but our learners in general. And one of our teachers came up with this great idea and Jeremy Harrison. And he thought it'd be a good idea if the kids wrote a story, put it on, I forget, a storyboard and then made it into a film. The film could be animated, it could be used, they could use claymation, they could use still pictures. They could act it out, even though that's more complicated. And let's see where it goes. And it really has taken off to where we're forming connections with UW-Stout, UW-Eau Claire, connections in the community. We pulled a bunch of community people together last year to help judge these films. Got together off, you know, at volume one. And it was, it was a really good time. It was a time to really talk about kids and enjoy with what, what the kids put together. And the kids really get into this and they learn all sorts of things between language arts, presentation skills, technology skills. And now we're starting to connect with like universities and they can bring in so much more. We encouraged Mr. Jeremy to present at the TIES conference up in the cities recently about this. And he did, and he took the kids with him and it was a total knockout. It was, I think forty people were in the audience. There was a Montessori school from, I don't know where they're at, but all of a sudden a Montessori school in California was contacting him. Other schools, public schools were contacting him. And it was a great experience for these kids. When they came back and you heard these kids talk about presenting at this conference and one of them was a hard learner, he, you know, learning doesn't come easy for him, that you can see where all of a sudden education is making a difference for a lot of these kids. And we're, we're very excited about this. We have some local sponsors, Lysker Jewelers, Jason Ancorn, a local artist, helped create the T-shirts and everything. And now MyCon Cinemas has offered to do our viewing of our films. So the kids get to go to, well, they have to go to Chippewa Falls because none of the theaters here can handle our huge numbers. But the films will be shown on the big screen and we're already very excited about that.
Commissioner Carson, go ahead.
So I was thinking this all along through the garden, the IMC, but this was a great segue. Have you had opportunities to share what you've learned about these neat project-based learning with the staff in our district?
We did with the, all of these I talked about, except the garden, brand new. Like with the STEM, Project Lead the Way, we're just figuring it out. We're not quite ready there yet. But when Jeremy went to the TIES conference, he came back and he said, hey, I was standing there and someone from the old- there, and someone from the O'Clare School District was saying, hey, I just heard this great presentation on this film festival. And Jeremy's like, hey, that was me. You know? And so all of a sudden now, we're talking about, we're gonna... How can we get our staffs together with Roosevelt? How can we get our staffs together with Northwoods? And what clicked in my mind was, we're always trying to think of, how can we hit the district all at once? But maybe it's not that. Maybe it's, how can we form partnerships with schools? How can we share, not just what we're learning, but we want to learn from what the other schools are doing as well? And I think we're onto something, I really do. And I hope we can grow this because I would love to... And professional development time is such a premium, but wouldn't it be great if we could steal an hour and just get our staffs together and share some of these ideas? And I think that'd be very powerful. Because I know, I think he was actually talking to someone from Sam Davy, and he got all excited about what they're doing, they were excited about what we were doing. And what a great opportunity for us to learn. So, great question. And then we have our big project. We have playground equipment that is expiring on us, and we need to replace it. We are looking to raise $80,000 for this beautiful equipment that you see in front of you, but it's more than that. It's not just raising money. It's about how the parents are coming together because we put it in their hands. And I sit with them, but it's, we're reaching out to community people, we're reaching out to parents, and we're making progress. But this is a staff working together and community members. And I have a very short clip here, and I know we're all tired. I promise it's under three minutes, but this kind of explains how the community has come together just a little bit. I'm really hoping the technology works.
For our school's rule contest, we received nominations for schools all over western Wisconsin. Usually they come... And students.
But this month, school's rule contest is about neighbors helping neighbors. The winner, Chippewa Valley Montessori School, was sent to us by a woman who has become a member of the school's community in an unexpected way. She saw a need and wanted to help.
For Paula Vaughn and of O'Clare and her dog, Minnie, Chippewa Valley Montessori School is part of their daily walking route.
We've lived here about six years, and so we've been walking past the Montessori School every day, twice a day if not more.
During those trips, the students have come to know and love Paula and Minnie, and she has come to know and love them right back.
The kids are wonderful. They have manners. They say please and thank you, and they're always happy to see Minnie, and they're always asking, can we pet Minnie? Can we pet Minnie?
But while passing by, Paula couldn't help but notice the school's playground, well, could use some work.
The old Eagles Nest. I grew up with one of those, so I won't tell you how old I am, but that needs new... Yeah, that needs to go.
Our playground has outlived its usefulness and is starting to become... You know, it just has expired according to the manufacturer where we can't get parts anymore.
According to Principal Todd Johnson, last month, the school launched a fundraising campaign to make a new playground a reality.
We just think our kids should be able to play on safe and fun equipment because it's such a big part of education.
The playground comes at a cost, $80,000. Paula nominated the school in our school's rule contest and hopes they would win the $3,000 in box tops for education courtesy of General Mills to help them pay for a new playground. And today, Gorty's guru, Matt Solving, and I were thrilled to announce to the school, they won.
$3,000. Woo!
We know that it's one small act, but hopefully the kids will see that one small act can really make a difference.
She's made an impact on the kids, the kids have made an impact on her, and she's one of many of our neighbors.
And Bob, what I really love about this month's winner is that it really goes to show anyone can nominate any school. You don't have to be a teacher or have a child there. And speaking of that, we are always taking...
So when they came out, they were very excited because they're like, this is the first time. And this is what they've been working towards, is like get the community to nominate schools instead of someone within the school to nominate schools. So they were excited to come out. They were fun to work with just because they were so excited. So with that, that concludes my presentation. And again, I have to thank my governance board for being so supportive. I have a great staff. Thank you, school board. Thanks for the district office for being so supportive. And I think when we all come together, good things can happen.
Thank you, Todd. Thanks.
Thanks, Todd. Sounds great.
Anything from the public on Charles? Okay. Sounds like a lot of love. Thanks for coming, too.
Sure. It's almost a complex seeing everyone leave.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
I think you probably saw the scurry of activity or flurry of activity as Pete and Todd were getting ready to present. We have a little bit of a safety update, and I'm going to ask Mr. Libham to fill us in because he's been the one who's been kind of managing this behind the scenes as we've been here in the board meeting.
Can I ask Todd a question before he goes first?
Yeah, about this.
Okay. Everything was wonderful, but can you give me an update on your diversity plan that you were implementing as far as trying to diversify your student population?
Sure. But we can't go out recruiting, we know that. Those are the state laws. So what we do is we work towards raising the awareness in our building, making sure that our classrooms are... That what we're teaching is culturally sensitive to all cultures and that we're welcoming for all the different cultures in O'Clare. And we're also taking a little bit of a different look now. One of the additions to our governance board has been Kristen Gundry, who is very knowledgeable on how to work with the staff to look at not only just the culture you see in the United States, but the culture you see in O'Clare, because that's where our kids are going to come from. And culture can look all sorts of different ways. We can look at our grandparents, we can look at the different races in O'Clare, but it's taken a look at everything, including even gender. So we just, right now, the focus will be on making sure we give our children different opportunities for... To be exposed to different cultures and also have those conversations in the classroom and to make sure our doors are open and we're very welcoming.
Now, have you seen an increase in race, in the multiple races that we have here?
Every year, we go up just a little, but it's just a little. But it's, at least it's going up, not sliding back. Still not where we want it to be by any means. You're welcome.
Okay, great. Thank you. Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, earlier this evening, must have been around eight o'clock or so, got word that a threat had been made to... At North High School. We don't know what prompted the threat or specifically where it was directed, but two students were identified as possibly being involved. The administration at North, Mr. Volk worked with his liaison officer, Henning, and they were able to investigate and were able to apprehend the person who made the threat, a student. He is currently in custody. There is no further threat that the police perceive exists. So the families have been notified. We're currently in the process of communicating to families in the community what had taken place because it was out on social media. So we're getting the word out that that situation is underhand and is being further investigated by the police department and the administration. School will resume and go on as normal tomorrow, but wanted to let you know that that's what was taking place. I would like to say also that Principal Volk and Officer Henning were on this and spent quite a bit of time tonight, as did others, investigating and getting to the bottom of it. I mean, this all resolved in probably two hours. So it was well-handled, unfortunate for all.
Great, thank you. Give us our appreciation to them, too. So actually, next on the agenda is the... Is the safety and security report. And I assume it's fairly short if I understand right, Tim. Good, thank you. Yeah, right.
Right, so I was asked to just give a brief overview of where we've been in the last year and a half with our emergency prevention and response and where we're going in the future. You will be getting a more thorough written summary here in the near future. Yeah, that's good enough just there. First off, I was trying to get rid of the slides on the side, but here we go. There we go. Yep, that's what I thought. So the one thing we wanted to share, and you've seen this a while back, you've forgotten about it perhaps, but we shifted away from a crisis intervention model to a emergency prevention and response. The first idea is to prevent emergencies from happening, and then secondly, to identify how would we go about responding to a variety of emergencies. Our previous model was all built on a situation happening and then having a very hierarchical approach to who's on the team, who's in charge, who makes the decisions, and how do these things happen? That works very well when everybody's there and it's a predetermined problem, but when the people who are on the team aren't present or available, when the problem presents itself that you've never seen before, it doesn't provide for that flexibility. So we've changed that to and have gone with an incident command system, which is based on more roles and functions of what's needed and not people or titles. It's adaptive to any situation. You can use this proactively to plan or reactively to deal with the situation that's taking place. It's expandable or collapsible. Oftentimes, one person is able to work this system by themselves, but if need be, like happened tonight, was able to expand to just the number of people that you needed to do. And really, lastly, it's standardized with other community and government agencies, law enforcement, fire department, hospitals, emergency responders, the military, they all use this system. So there's a common structure that people would fit in if a situation were to arise. So currently, what we're doing is staff has been trained and they're practicing. This has taken a little bit of time because it's very different from having staff think somebody else is going to be responsible for making decisions to realizing that any staff at any time may be responsible for making decisions. So we've not overwhelmed people, we've taken it nice and slow so people got comfortable with that or are getting comfortable with that. We're currently also, I have just purchased and have purchased, but are developing and implementing InformaCast communication system that would allow us very easily and quickly to be able to communicate with all families a common message from a centralized location. Would have been very applicable this evening. You heard already tonight in the referendum conversation, design and construction of secure entrances. We have just purchased and are going to be implementing Crisis Go, which is an emergency response app where we could take what had been known as a crisis binder and we can put it on an app so everybody with a smartphone would be able to have access to all the various emergency protocols that we would use, contact information, floor plans, things like that that we also can share with emergency responders. We're looking at all of our emergency response protocols. They've evolved over time, but some of them are based on practices that are 15 years old, so we're looking to update them. We also are updating and revising our evacuation plans. New buildings have come into being in the last 10 years or so. Some places that we have used are no longer available, so we're updating and revising those. And then our next steps...
Commissioner Johnson.
Can you just go back to that? I know you don't want to tell us details about emergency response and evacuation plans, but I had a neighbor who works in a different district, and they've kind of jumped on this kind of revised thinking about how to respond. And we've heard about it in the media that, you know, the, you know, run, secure, and then, you know, attack, basically, kind of response. Are we looking to do something new with kind of the updated, you know, trend?
Yeah, yes. And I'm glad you asked. You'll hear more about it. They're probably talking about Alice, but there are other means that we have. We also have our Intruder Alert drill that incorporates much of what's there, but it's a little different thinking, and it fits in with the incident command system where a person can't wait for somebody to come on the PA system or the police department to come in and help them. They're going to need to make decisions on their own. So yes, that's part of our training, and we'll be updating that next school year. To a process and a protocol yet to be determined. But again, it'll be an extension of what we currently have in place. The one thing with the evacuation sites that we're working on as well is once we have our evacuation site settled and we have memorandum of understanding with these community agencies, and these are sites that are non-district sites that we would only use in the event we had to due to weather or the immediacy of a situation, a fire, a chemical leak or whatever, get students out of the building to another secure location quickly. If time was on our side, we would get buses, we would transport students to another district location. This would only be used in the event that that was not possible. But one thing we wanted to incorporate is a reunification plan. If we have time on our hands, we can bus or have students transport themselves home. It's when we aren't able to do that, we need to better design and revise and upgrade our means by which we would get buses or other transportation systems to get them home. Then again, we would expand the use of our InformaCast communication system, which again allows us both internally and externally to communicate similar messages through texting or Twitter, Facebook, those sorts of things. And then what we're going to start doing is as people have transitioned, take a more concentrated and focused approach on staff training. We do our drills, we practice our intruder alerts, we have those sorts of situations. We'll be debriefing with North High School and the police department after this incident tonight, but we're going to do more concentrated and purposeful training on getting staff comfortable with a different way of thinking their role in an emergency. Just as the police and responders have changed their protocols, we're looking to change with them, and therefore, we just need to be a little more purposeful in our training with staff. That's it.
Thank you, Tim. Questions from the board? All right, good. Appreciate that. Okay, on our agenda, we have Policy 332 before us, Charter Choice Programming Committee, and Innovation Zones. So this is the first, it's been before us. We had to postpone it last time. And here we are at 10:30. We'll look at it tonight. Yeah, entire policy board meeting, yeah. So let's begin with just comments from the board. I don't know if we can get it up there, Sandia. Is it possible to get it up before us or not? But go ahead. Anyone have comments about the... Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
I'd like to reassign the agenda-setting committee to somebody else.
Granted.
Funny stuff. So just a couple of comments in paragraph two. I just think it's weird that the committee is charged twice. In paragraph one, charged with the development of a structure to initiate, monitor, and sustain Innovation Zones. That sounds like a charge. So my suggested edits would be that in paragraph two, the charge of is crossed off and is to is replaced with shall, so that it would read, this committee shall provide guidance and recommendations, yada, yada, yada. And then in the second sentence, maybe there's an English teacher in here that could tell me whether this, which is correct, but it seems that this would encourage innovation, which would be more appropriate than that. And if I don't have, if I haven't been in grammar class for 30 years, you'll forgive me for that.
Yeah, you can do a search on that which in Google and find out.
Well, okay, you do that. And then the third sentence, through this investigation and advisement, the committee will instead of can, or may be able to instead of can, but just...
Shall.
Will?
So the first, let's just look at that first suggestion. So the first suggestion, the beginning of the second paragraph was, the committee shall provide...
This committee shall.
Right, removing the charge. So that we don't say charge again.
Correct.
The committee shall provide guidance and recommendations.
Yes, this committee shall provide. So that would be my first friendly amendment.
Mm-hmm. Well, we don't even have it on the floor yet. Well, we don't even have it on the floor yet, so.
Okay.
So the first was that part, this committee shall.
So shall is saying, this will happen, like, we are commanding you to do this.
And then it was, this will encourage innovation. This is the middle line of that paragraph. She suggested which could increase rather than that could increase.
Feel free, feel free to do a Google search if you, the proper use of that.
One of them is used as an example, and one is used as a descriptor, and I don't remember which is which.
So is the math professor?
Yeah.
Come on, Joe, Google that.
Anyhow. That was a suggestion, making this will encourage innovation, which could increase.
And then in paragraph three, or the sentence three, this is all paragraph two. Through this investigation advisement, the committee will support the increase in student readiness, blah, blah, blah. So just substituting will for can.
May, may, more, more cer, I'm sorry, more certain you want it to be, like a will was, they will do it.
Well, it's something that, yeah, that, I mean, can just means, well, they could, they might not, you know.
I'm not, I don't have any opinion. Commissioner Hamlocke, well?
I have, I have one question and maybe an idea for a change on it. Is, but it's the last paragraph. Does anybody have anything before that?
I had one in the last paragraph also, we'll see if it's saying.
Okay. I just, and the line that says, an ongoing review process for corrective action will be defined in the rules. I'd like to see maybe corrective action, say quality assurance or something like that.
I, I was, I had the same mark, and I put for improvement will be defined. An ongoing review process for improvement will be defined.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Because along the lines of continuous improvement.
Yep.
Any other suggestions from board? How about anything more substantive on this, anything else? Okay. Okay, if not, if there's no other suggestions or any substantive comments on it, we could have a first reading. Anyone willing to do the first reading, and I'll do it if no one else does.
Do you have the corrections?
I do, I have one for me.
Yeah, I don't, so go ahead.
Okay, you want to turn off your thing?
Unless people want to disagree with that.
Yeah, if there's any disagreements with the suggestions, we can, no? Okay. Maybe there's an advantage doing this late. All right.
No, we are-
Charter/Choice Programming Committee Policy 332. The Charter Choice Programming Committee chaired by a school board member with the executive director of administration serving as the liaison to the committee, is charged with development of a structure to initiate, monitor, and sustain innovation zones. This committee shall include two board members, one central office administrator, one teacher from each charter school, one non-charter elementary teacher, one non-charter secondary teacher, one charter board member per each charter school, one charter head of school from each charter school, and other consultants as needed, based on committee work, i.e. pre-K, community members, experts in the field, et cetera. This committee shall provide guidance and recommendations to the school board relating to its role as authorizer of current and future ECASD charter/choice schools and programs. This will encourage innovation, which could increase our ability to provide diverse programming and methodologies. Through this investigation advisement, the committee will support the increase in student readiness for and success in ECASD programming and post-secondary options. The Eau Claire Area School District ECASD shall consider the establishment of innovative schools and programs, innovation zones. The establishment and implementation of innovation zones will assist the board in accomplishing the goals outlined in the strategic plan. One, innovation includes but is not limited to approaches to curriculum, instruction, staffing, school organization, calendar, learning, and achievement metrics, family/community partnerships, use of technology, and other strategies not typically associated with conventional educational programming. Point two, innovation zones are spaces, cultures, and methodologies that are created and maintained for a specified period of time to afford staff a level of independence, authority, and incentive to pursue educational innovation free from, educational innovation free from undue barriers or interference, while being held accountable to defined achievement results. While innovation zones are independent and separate from the conventional program, they shall be established and sustained in a positive climate of collaboration among all entities of the ECASD. Innovation zones shall meet state and federal educational requirements and be fiscally responsible. An ongoing review process for improvement will be defined in the rules. Innovation zone proposals shall meet all the criteria of a performance agreement as specified in the administrative rules and shall be approved by the board. The Board of Education will review this policy at least annually for five years after enactment. Okay, first reading done. All right, last policy.
Was there a community?
Is there any community comment? I, I figured a lot had left, so, but, no, okay, all right. I shouldn't have assumed that. Okay, Policy 424. This is on open enrollment, if I understand it right, there's really just a few corrections in this one, is that accurate?
That's right.
Okay, so there's a few spots, you know, places there. Read that whole thing.
Okay, just, can't you just read paragraph two?
Can we, can we just read the changes? Okay, I'm glad someone said that, because I don't know, I don't remember what, okay, I don't remember what the rules say on that, but we'll, okay, so is it just that, starting at number two, those are the only changes there? Any questions from board members before we do reading?
Before you read it, I just noticed, though, when I read through it, that where it says space in the second paragraph, if determine whether the district has space, has is crossed off.
I believe, so read it with the has.
Yeah.
I believe so, yeah. Okay, someone else's turn. Who would like to read those three paragraphs? Okay, Commissioner Luganbill, go ahead.
She's putting has, okay. If the special education or related services required for a student with a disability is delivered through programming determined to have no space available, then the application shall be denied. In any instance where an application is submitted by a student with a disability, but there is no current IEP available for the student, the district will use the procedures defined in DPI's administrative rules to determine whether the district has space. If a non-resident student receives his or her initial individualized education program, IEP, while attending the district under open enrollment, or if a non-resident student's IEP changes after the student begins attending school in the district, or if the district has approved an application for a student without an IEP, and it is subsequently determined that the student is a child with a disability for whom there is either a record of a previous special education evaluation or a prior IEP based upon such evaluation, then the student may be returned to his or her resident district if the district determines that the special education and/or related services required for the student fall into a category in which no spaces are available.
Okay, great, thank you. So we will hopefully bring that next time. Request for future agenda items. I know, Commissioner Johnson, you had mentioned something earlier, I think I've got it down, go ahead.
Yeah, so I think there were kind of four broad options identified, and only one of those options really could be accomplished without boundary changes or major expenditures, et cetera. So one of the options that wouldn't involve any of those things was funneling our open enrollment students from other districts into North High School, instead of now, they're kind of divided geographically, as if our boundaries were extended. And so I would like for the board to consider implementing that option, or direct administration to implement that option for open enroll students in the future, to all be sent to North High School, because it has more space than Memorial, and that would help to balance the enrollments without taking some of those other more drastic measures. And kind of in doing that, could then put those students into the same process of, as intra-district transfers. So any student within the district who wants to go to its school other than their identified home school would still have that, that option, so they would be treated like those students. So basically, everybody outside of the Eau Claire School District would be identified as a North High School attendance district, or student. So I'd like the board to consider that option in the future.
So that not, not in demo trends of facilities, so they're not talking-
Demographics, that committee identified four possible ways to remedy the inequity in, in, that was one of the ways, and the, basically the only one that can be done without a lot of.
Yeah, right. So are you interested in looking at changing a policy for, to have it that way?
Correct. So I don't know if it's a policy, and I think Tim Leibham can, you know, can help figure out how that comes to, to the agenda, as far as what policies or rules would have to be changed.
Okay, okay. Any others? Commissioner Hamlocke, well?
I just want to bring this up, and I don't know if it's an agenda item, but we were going to have a system in place for the board to thank people who come to our public forum, and so will that start soon?
We did a dry run tonight.
I was wondering if you were doing that over there, Tim.
Yeah, it was, it was dry, and we will discuss a little bit tomorrow. There were some things that went on, and one of the big ones that, and I'll just share, and there was process, but I found it peculiar typing and having people listen, where normally I would listen and not, not be sitting down here trying to collect their thoughts. It seemed as if I was being discourteous and a bit disengaged. But I do have it, I think there's some processes we can do, and we should be able to start running it January 4th.
Good idea, thank you for thinking of that. Any others? Okay, just before I ask for adjournment, I just want to thank the board in particular for, I'm just so impressed with the deliberative nature of our board. I know it's hard making the decisions about both compensation and referendum, so I appreciate that, and I also appreciate staff who brought this for us, Abby and the superintendent on that discussion. I know it's been hard for all of us for a while, thinking about these. So I just want to appreciate, I say my appreciation to all of you for that. So I would accept a motion to adjourn. Motion from Commissioner Luganbill, second from Commissioner Vu. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, we adjourn for the night.
This program is recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television. Chippewa Valley Community Television is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, you can contact us by calling 715-839-5067, or on the web at www.ccbtv.org.